That totaled several cars, December 23rd, you know, eight days after an earlier flood that totaled several cars. I got an email from the city manager, Kevin Woodhouse, saying it was not at this level. It appears that we had the city manager, Public Works, and Wastewater all out of town that day. I don't know who they had watching the, watching the pump house. It was not turned on. I'm the closest house. I can hear it. I can see it. The pump was not turned on. Here's the deal. Here's why they don't want to have to report whenever Lindemar floods. Where the Panda Express is, is a cleanup site. There was a gas station there. Every time that gets wet, liquefaction, they have standing water. They have to report it to the state, okay, as a fuel spill. That is still a cleanup site. Anytime Lindemar gets flooded, they have to report it to the state. They hate doing that, okay? But we're getting flooded three times a year like clockwork in December. I remember when we had 14 cars destroyed in December 2014 on that same corner that public, the, the city manager at the time, Lori Tenfo, and this, uh, the mayor, Karen Irvin, were not aware of it until over a month later. Okay? It's happening. If someone dies there, you guys are going to have personal liability because you're aware of it. Okay? We've told you many times in writing. Each of you received notice them. Sometimes I get an email from some council member that says, oh, it didn't flood there. I can assure you it did. I suggest you go talk to the residents of Anza Drive. And I don't mean select residents. I suggest you pick any of the 50 houses on Anza Drive and ask them if their street, if their car was flooded, Chris, the eve of Christmas Eve on the 23rd. I can assure you the answer will be yes. Again, when you don't report these fuel spills into the ocean, when you don't report these spills of stormwater into the ocean, when you don't turn the pump house on, when you don't staff it, I mean, it's causing hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage to all these properties, you know? Every single, they're good. It's like liquefaction, the blocks wet for months. Everybody has mold in their house, you know? I had a car destroyed and my neighbor had a car destroyed. Two other neighbors had a car destroyed. Take care of this problem. It's simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next hand raised is from Mark Hubbell. Mark, you may now unmute yourself. Please state which item you'd like to speak on.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, may I speak about the process but not the content of the recent documents? The general plan and, um, and the EIR or EEIR?
Not, not now. That'll go on under Oral Communications.
Will that be later this evening?
It will be. I'll let you know, Mark.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mark. Better mayor, there's some more hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to council for motion. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Before we make that motion, Mayor Beer, I want, since it's referenced in, uh, in reference to your comments in the minutes on packet page 22, I just want to double check with you on the second to last paragraph on that page. I don't know if you have the printed form to look at. I believe you, it's, it references public engagement fees. And I think you meant to say, what I recall you saying was public engagement piece. And I just want to verify that. And if that's the case, I'd like to request that we make that slight amendment to the minutes.
I, I agree. Yeah. Thank you so much for noticing that. I appreciate it.
Sure. And with that change, I would make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Double vote.
Hey, with the motion to approve the consent calendar with item number two, as amended by, uh, council member Beckmeyer and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick. I'll start the real call vote, starting with council member Beckmier, council member Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vardalas.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And the consent calendar passes unanimously with item, uh, the amendment as stated to item number two.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, that moves us on to our public hearing for tonight.
Actually, Madam, Madam Mayor, I was worried that this might happen. You all are just a little too fast. And so we need to wait until 7:30 to have the public hearing. So you can go on with the rest of the agenda. So right now it'd be oral communications and then council communications and then staff communications. Whatever will take us to 7:30 and you may even be able to hear one consideration item. I don't know, but we'll just keep going through the, the agenda until we hit 10, 7:30.
And I have a question about this. So if we're in the middle of oral communications and it's 7:30, then we'll stop and then come back to oral communications?
No, I think you can finish the item.
Okay.
You want to, I mean, certainly when you're seeing how many hands are raised, you're going to want to anticipate, you know, how many speakers you're going to have to see, are we going to go till nine o'clock? Because if we go to nine o'clock and yes, that would be a problem. But we can, we can answer that question better when we find out how many people want to speak at oral comments.
Okay, thank you. Sue, did you have a question? Your hand is up. No? Okay. All right, so then we can go on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however, that during the oral communication portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communication. A maximum time of three minutes. How many hands do we have up?
Mayor Beer, I'm seeing four hands. I'm seeing six hands now raised.
Okay.
And seven.
Counsel, do we have enough time or should we go to two minutes? Thoughts? Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick?
Give peace a chance.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go with two minutes tonight for, um, oral communications and public comment. And we'll go ahead and get started. Mark Hubbell, this is, this is your time. So put your hand up.
Our first hand raised is taking Dan. You may now unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I can hear you, Dan. Dan?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Excellent. I've never heard of public comment being restricted to two minutes for only six speakers. Essentially, you're trying to fit it in before a time period, not, you're not constrained by time. You're just, uh, moving around a specific period of time. Anyway, um, I don't know why it's a secret. I, I don't know why it's such a big secret that the Ortega School greenhouse was burned down by Safe and Same fireworks. $251,000 of damage was subrogated to five different kids' families, um, to their home insurance. Your home insurance only pays for Safe and Same fireworks. It doesn't pay for illegal fireworks. Go check your policy now. I'll give any of you guys who have a policy right now that pays for illegal fireworks damage a hundred dollars each. Go check your policy. Three of you have sold fireworks in the past. Oshana School, high school, still sells fireworks. When I go swim there on 4th of July, I walk through the fire, by the fireworks booth on the corner there, even though a student was partially blinded in the early eighties by Safe and Same fireworks there. It's time to stop selling fireworks of any sort in Pacifica. I hope you guys will take a look at that. I hope none of you will take money from the fireworks industry in your next election. It's a bad move. It burned down a school. And we shouldn't have teachers and elected officials selling fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is Suzanne Moore, followed by Summer Lee. Suzanne, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you, Suzanne Moore. And thank you, city staff, for the draft Pacifica general plan. As a Pacifican greatly interested in fair housing, I look to the general plan as the guiding foundation for the housing element yet to come. I am aware that the city is making an effort to reach out to all Pacificans for feedback on this document that directly impacts our safety and quality of life. And I understand that for Pacificans without computer access, the draft will be available at our libraries, Sharp Park Reports, they now have one copy for library use. I understand from the introduction to the general plan of the importance of internal consistency among all its elements. And I have two questions for staff and council consideration. The first, the numbers suggested for RENA six goals are not consistent with the numbers in our general plan. The RENA goals are for 1,900 units, while our general plan addresses an expected new housing development of 990 units. I'm concerned because Pacifica has not historically created enough low income housing. And this is likely contributed to displacement and homelessness. I would like our general plan to better state its commitment to housing diversity. Second, I have been told by other community members that our local coastal plan awaits city feedback for, to the coastal commission and that this isn't somewhat in limbo and it's not been improved. Since a fair amount of our housing is in the coastal zone, I'm concerned that elements of our general plan may not be consistent. So here are my asks. First, I would like to ask staff and council to wait until both libraries can share the draft general plan with the public before minimum 45-day period countdown for public feedback begins. It's incredibly important to reach out to those communities and members impacted by the digital divide. And restricting the plan to library use makes it challenging. Second, I ask that city finalize our local coastal plan and provide that for community review. And lastly, I also ask that our general plan incorporate greater language of a commitment to housing diversity to pave the way for our housing element. Pacifica's historic failure to adequately supply decent, affordable housing at all economic levels gravely impacts our essential workers, families, elders, and disabled. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker is Summer Lee, followed by Sue DeGruy. Summer, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Beer, council and staff. I don't have to lecture any of you about the duties of representing Pacificans as city officials. You've taken a position that entails a lot of invisible work, time drain, and I'm sure is in many ways thankless. Side effects of a functioning democracy, and we'd all agree, hopefully worth it. Because we all know that democracy is the whole thing of government of the people, by the people, for the people. A city's general plan is the constitution envisioned to guide decisions for the people of this city. On Friday, at around 10:00 PM, city staff released the general plan documents online. The website shortly after stopped working, which continued into the weekend. It wasn't only until today that libraries received the documents. The appearance so far is that public input is not being prioritized, perhaps being avoided, and that the city is interested in the shortest 45-day comment period in general plan history. Perhaps this tenor of the general plan process is a result of the want to moot out a lawsuit against the city for having a 40-year-old inadequate general plan. But one might have imagined that in order to solve a problem of a 40-year-old plan, there would be care and concern. This is a new EIR, as announced in August 2020. You can't call public input from many years ago as good enough. Others will speak tonight about some of the already apparent problems in the drafts. Internal inconsistencies, perhaps being the most fatal one. But also the patently absurd errors of a map saying there's little coastal hazard where an entire country watched an apartment building fall into the ocean. And the patently absurd error of a map saying there are no to few landslides where children happen to die from one. But perhaps most of all, going by Lincoln's famous words, these problems become of the people and for the people too. The people who live here and have appointed you and who pay taxes here, whether they pay for a building that falls into the ocean or have to cover cities' legal fees, and they look to you to solve problems in a way that don't create new ones. There's still time to do this right, maybe not perfectly right, but let's do this together. So work with us to do this better, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Our next speaker is Sue DeGruy, followed by Anita Reese. Sue, you may now unmute yourself.
Well, thank you. I just want to take the opportunity again to encourage council staff and each of us who are residents here to make sure that we do our very best to outreach to our fellow residents, whether they agree with our points of view or not, or whether we don't even know. But that they at least should know that this is our constitution, which means it should be the aspirations of the entire community. And if people in the community don't want to talk, that's fine. But they should at least be aware and that there's a time limit of right now responding to very long and very important documents. And so tell your neighbor, council, please do what you can to get it out more, more in the basic libraries, maybe some in the community centers. Not everybody is techie. I think those who've spoken tonight are at least somewhat techie. And, um, you know, that's still very, very concerning. And I think I read somewhere that there's 500 respondents so far, not to this new setting, but to the past. And 500 still, are those individual residents? Who are these stakeholders? So my concern is that the community is the stakeholder, the number one. And do they even know and do they have an opportunity to search and think and talk and respond in time? So I, I beg of you to please always reconsider that. And for neighbor to neighbor, please do what you can. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Sue. Our next speaker is Anita Reese, followed by Peter Loeb. Anita, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. I just wanted to let you all know that we are open, uh, we're still open modified hours while repairs are made since the fire in September. We're open nine to 3:30 on Mondays and Tuesdays, 10:30 to seven on Wednesdays, 10:30 to five on Thursdays, and nine to one on Friday. We are closed for lunch, uh, Monday through Thursday, 12:30 to 1:30. We'll also be open on Saturday, January 29th, from nine to one to launch our tax program. Whenever possible, we encourage folks to call before you go to our office and either schedule a, a phone appointment or schedule an in-person appointment. Our phone number is 650-738-7470. We're currently making tax appointments. Taxes will be prepared by certified volunteer tax preparers beginning on Saturday, January 29th, and will continue on Wednesdays from two to seven. If you need help with your taxes, you can call us to schedule a time to drop off your materials. And we're generally be able to prepare them within three days. And we may have a limited number of in-person appointments. And if all repairs go as planned, we hope to reopen our deck and reception area on the 29th as well. And I'll keep you posted. Our next scheduled grocery distribution is Wednesday, the 12th, at the American Legion Hall, which is at 555 Fuel. If folks need groceries before then, they can contact PRC for pantry support. And we will shop and shop for you and bring the groceries out to your car. I also wanted to mention that the One Day Homeless Count, which was scheduled for January 27th, has been postponed due to COVID. It is expected to happen on Thursday, February 24th. And PRC will be the deployment site for the city of Pacifica. We're still recruiting volunteers. So if you're interested, go to hsa.smcgov.org and search for 2022 One Day Homeless Count to sign up for a location. And again, call the office if you need help, 650-738-7470. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Our next speaker is Peter Loeb, followed by Christine Bowles. Peter, you may now unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Peter Loeb. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say that I was here in 1980. I participated in developing the 1980 general plan, just as a public, as a private citizen. And, uh, what I remember is a series of, of workshops in which the, the public participated. And we went over each segment, each part of town, talking about what should be the, the general plan for that area. Now what we have is, um, a, a new general plan draft and a draft EIR and a Sharp Park specific plan that were released basically over this past weekend. And it's an EIR that's over a thousand pages. You know, a general plan that's almost 300 pages and the Sharp Park specific plan. It's a tremendous amount of material to go over. And what I'm asking for, I guess, is some help. There, there is no workshop or study session or anything planned for the public to, to sit and interact, talk about what's in the plan, what some of their issues might be with it. There's no way to resolve anything. All we can do is submit written comments. And, and then the comment period closes and what happens next? You know, eventually it'll go to a planning commission hearing and then a city council hearing. But, you know, we don't get to have any interaction to understand what's in the plan, what we think ought to be there and so forth and so on. I really would, I think the city owes its citizens some help in understanding what the important, what's in this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Our next hand is Christine Bowles, followed by Mark Hubbell. Christine, you may now unmute yourself.
Um, good evening, council members and staff. And Mary Beer, that rolls off my tongue so nicely. Congratulations again on your new role in leading this city. In January 2020, starting with the Vista Mar project on Monterey Road and the landslides I found in the old public records that were not identified in the planning application, I became concerned about whether the city was properly reviewing projects to protect public safety. I started digging into the general plan and the safety element section in particular. While the general plan dates from 1980, the safety element was completely rewritten in 1983, just three years later. Why was that? Because the winter of 1982 was so horrendous. The city experienced major flooding, 475 landslides, and the horrific deaths of three children in Park Pacifica. The studies done for the safety element update called for new landslide maps. And yet, 40 years later, these had still not been done. I gave you all this information as part of our appeal hearing in late 2020. I'm sure you know the famous quote about history. Those who do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it. The safety element released on Friday still does not have the proper landslide maps. The area where the kids died on Oddstad is still shown in white, not landslide prone. The cliffs on Esplanade, where just six years ago we lost several homes and two large apartment buildings to coastal erosion are also white, not erosion or landslide prone. How is this even possible? Is staff overworked? Is Sam Car or other outside development interests so powerful that we can't even think about our risk because property values might decrease in certain areas? I realize you're in a very difficult position right now as the process staff has established and it leaves no room for collaboration with the public. We are ready to work with you to revise these elements and ensure a proper update that considers our safety and that complies with state law. I encourage you to do the right thing. Perhaps you were elected for such a time as this, just like Esther in the Old Testament, to stand up and do right by her people. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Our next hand raised is by Mark Hubbell, followed by Matthew. Mark, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Beer, council and staff. My name is Mark Hubbell. First, I would like to thank members of the city staff who provided so much effort over the last few years to produce the planning documents. I'm looking forward to continue reading them. Although I do wish that we, as current citizens, were provided recent opportunities to assist in the process with currently relevant insights and experience, experiences, ensuring a much more enduring plan. Nearly 30 days ago in mid-December, I had sent an email to the city council and staff requesting an explanation of reasons why the time period to review and provide comments on the general plan and draft environmental impact report were so tight. I am still waiting for an acceptable response. That's why I'm asking again. If the city is genuinely interested in citizens' opinions, there should be current workshops and citizen study groups to enhance the understanding and credibility of the plan, instead of challenging us individually to study, research, and formulate a response to about 30 pages of legalese and acronyms a day prior to the drop dead date. I want to repeat that, 30 pages of acronyms and legalese a day prior to the drop dead date to get through that information. Letting alone the idea that it would seem to be sound practice to provide responses for the city's considerations as far in advance as possible to allow potential corrections and revisions. For citizens with jobs and family commitments not involved in these processes on a regular basis, that is asking a lot. Obviously way too much to ask, which leads me to suspect that our elected officials and city management do not adequately value the ideas and opinions of Pacifica's citizens. I'm sorry to say that, but that's what I feel. That really bothers me and I know that it bothers many of our neighbors, friends.
Mark, I'm really sorry, but your time is up. I'm so sorry. I have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mark. And our last hand raised is from Matthew D. Matthew, you may now unmute yourself.
Uh, sorry, this is my first council meeting. Before I proceed and before the timer on screen starts, well, oral communications later in the meeting, like at any point in the meeting, get three minutes per person instead of two, because I might need three minutes to discuss my issue.
This is oral communications, Matt, and then you're going to have two minutes. If you want to reach out to me or anybody else after the meeting, I'm really happy to meet with you and talk to you.
Uh, what, what, what time does a meeting end so I can reach out then and there?
Oh, I mean, we can, we can schedule a time.
Uh, okay.
Why don't you go ahead and give your public comment and we'll go from there.
Oh, uh, I, I can't give it in two minutes. I can only give it in three minutes. So should I just present another time instead?
That's up to you. If you want to share a little now, you, you do have the time.
Um, I guess I'll just give a little bit intro. So as you guys may know, there's like, so by Higgins Way, there's these hillsides that are, uh, under potential development. And these hillsides are really important to many members in my community. Now, since the timer is like already running out, I can't really talk much about it, but that's what I would talk about. Sorry, this is my first council meeting. Um, I'll try to present it another time. But yeah, I just wanted to kind of let you guys know I would talk about later.
Thank you, Matt. Please send me an email, okay, so we can schedule time together.
Mayor Beer, there are no more hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we will close oral communications and move on to our public hearing. Public hearing is to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of election district boundaries. And we will have Sarah to introduce the topic and Robert McIntyre from National Demographics Corp. to provide the presentation.
Hey, good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Um, tonight, this public hearing is, uh, for, to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of elec, election, city council election district boundaries. And, um, I have Robert McIntyre from National Demographics Corporation, which is, who, which is the firm that the city has engaged to analyze, uh, the 2020 census data with respect to the, um, the district maps that are in place and, uh, provide support for the redistricting process. And with that, I'm going to bring up a, a presentation that we have and, uh, turn it over to, um, Robert McIntyre from NDC.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor, council members, community, it's an honor to be here tonight. Uh, this is the first meeting in the process of, of redistricting, so redrawing those district boundary lines. It is a legally required component of having by district elections. We have to do this every decennial census. And so since the new decennial census data is out, we're going to, uh, move forward and hopefully have a good, uh, community engagement and hear from both the community at the public hearing and the council, hopefully directions moving forward. So when we come back at the next meeting and the future, future two meetings to discuss maps, uh, that we can have a very relevant and timely conversation, because you, there's not a whole lot of time statutorily to get through this process. Next slide, please. So just very quickly, when we look at the process itself, the census data was released, uh, by the Census Bureau on August 12th of last year. I know that seems like forever ago in COVID times, but that was actually a relatively short period of time. And then, of course, the state of California had to do its work. It had to remove the prison, uh, population from the census counts and reassign those, uh, people back to their home jurisdictions and, and upgrade, update the counts, the California census data counts. And so that didn't actually happen until September 20th. So when you think, but from September 20th to now, the city is already engaged with the demographer, already done some analysis, and we're going to talk about some of that analysis tonight, and laid out a plan to move forward for the redistricting process. And, and tonight is actually public hearing number one in that process. Uh, so the idea is to hold, uh, a public hearing prior to the release of a draft map. So you notice I'm not coming saying, hey, we're going to talk about three or four different maps tonight, because the goal of tonight's meeting is really to educate the public, those who choose to engage in the process. And of course, as elected, you're, you're experts in this field. But what we're trying to do is build a common vocabulary, not only between council members, but with the community. So as they engage, we can all speak and use that common language. Part of the goal tonight is to educate, but also to solicit input at, through the public hearing on what we call neighborhoods and communities of interest, and we're gonna define those in just a moment. One of the first decisions that I'm hoping to, to, in the, in the discussion after the public hearing with the council to get feedback on is whether or not the council wants to provide uh, mapping tools for the public. It's something that, that does cost extra money and does, i- it is another way to engage the public, and I'm gonna talk about specifics about that. But I just want to put it up that front. This is one of the questions I'm hoping to answer tonight is whether or not the council wants to uh, have map drawing tools for community members. And you'll see in just a minute, the reason I'm asking is because you're in a rather unique situation in that your existing map meets the legal requirements, because your population has not shifted so substantially to make it, bring your map out of balance. Next slide, please. On February fourteenth, uh, you, I'm sure your spouses are going to be very happy that you have a council meeting on, on Valentine's Day. Uh, but we'll be back here for public hearing number two, and at that meeting, we're hoping to actually be reviewing draft maps. And so tonight, we build that language. We have that input. At the next meeting, public hearing two on February fourteenth, we actually start reviewing draft maps with the goal of, of not just talking in the abstract, like we're gonna talk tonight, but really start talking about what we like and don't like about some of the draft maps that are available to us. So that way we can get very specific feedback. So by the time we come back for, uh, public hearing number three on February twenty-eighth, we're really narrowing this down, hopefully to one with an election sequence, so that way it can be brought for an ordinance for adoption on March fourteenth. Next slide, please. Now, here, here's the meat and potatoes of why we're here tonight. We're building that vocabulary. Uh, first and foremost, when we're drawing maps, we have to follow the federal laws. And when we talk about the federal laws, we have to draw maps that have roughly equal populations. So each district, when we talk about council districts, has to have roughly equal population within a small variance. We're talking of no more than a total variance from the highest, most overpopulated district to the lowest, most underpopulated district. That difference cannot be more than ten percent. But we're really trying to get smaller of that to where, to where we, to the extent we can, while maintaining all these other criteria that we're talking about. Another thing we, we need to do is make sure that we're following the Federal Voting Rights Act, the four tenets of the Federal Voting Rights Act, and that we're not racially gerrymandering. Now, this is gonna sound a little weird, because we're gonna spend some time talking about historically marginalized groups and protected class voters at the same time we're talking about not racially gerrymandering. And so I'll try to help you kind of thread the needle with that, uh, you know, just, just so when you're, get caught in the grocery store, uh, you can have that conversation, because it's a question that will come up usually in these projects. So once we've satisfied all the federal laws, we have to satisfy the California criteria for cities. And so when we're drawing those maps, we need to make sure that each council district is geographically contiguous. What does that mean? It means I can't split it into two separate, like, bubbles and have another district breaking it into two. It needs to be one, one piece, one contiguous piece. To the extent we can, while, while population balancing, we want to keep neighborhoods and communities of interest together. And that's why we want to hear about what people perceive as their neighborhoods and communities of interest today in the public hearing. We also want to use easily identifiable boundaries. Think of those major landmarks, major roads, highways, um, mountain sides, things that would be very obvious, borders or boundaries or, or ways to divide up your, your municipality. So that way, it, it seems pretty clear to most people, oh, this major street and that major street for the most part are the dividing lines for my, my council district. Now, of course, since population balancing is higher on the list, we're still gonna have some, some tweaking around the edges, but we want to try to minimize that and make it as obvious as possible when we draw the districts. And when, we want to draw them compact. When we think compact, think a circle. Now, a circle is a really neat idea until you see the geography of most, most cities, and you realize that it's pretty tough to draw four or five circles in most cities, because they're not, you know, neat shapes. And so we're gonna do the best we can to draw compact council districts. Now, when we look at that state criteria, you'll see the prohibited. We can't draw council districts that favor or discriminate against a political party. So how, how do we do that at NDC? We do not pull election data. We do not pull, uh, data regarding how people are registered, what party they're registered to. So we are not using any of that data when we draw council districts. So any N- National Demographics generated map will exclude that, well, it will, we will not use that data when drawing our draft maps for your consideration. Then, of course, there are other traditional redistricting principles. One of the things that, that many people, you know, appreciate is the fact that we go out of our way to make sure that if you were put into office by the people who elected you, that they should decide if you stay or go as electeds, rather than the demographers pinned. So to the extent that I can draw legally compliant maps, keeping in mind all the federal and state rules, without pairing council members, I'm going to do that out of respect for the voters in the last election. Let the voters at the next election decide whether or not the incumbents stay or go. And of course, if we're aware of future population growth, it's something we can consider. But remember, when I was talking about the federal voting, uh, laws with equal population, we can only o- over or underpopulate by a small amount, because the variance between the highest and lowest can't be more than ten percent. So if we know we're gonna have growth in one area, we can underpopulate it a little bit, but just a little bit. Next slide, please. So he- here's what we're hoping to hear from your community, uh, tonight, and this is the first concept, the concept of neighborhoods. So what is your neighborhood? So sometimes we talk about things like geographical boundaries, a- and, and some of those examples, as you see, are, are on the slide here. They might be things like uh, neighborhood dividing lines, highways, major roads, rivers, canals, train tracks. But some people, when they think of their neighborhood, they think of their schools or parks. Uh, I, I know in the neighborhood I live in, people are very tied to their elementary school boundaries. Um, that is another way to look at neighborhoods. Um, sometimes there's other landmarks. A- and so this is one area we're hoping to get public comment on, is how people define their neighborhoods. Next slide, please. The other area we're hoping to comment on is, is the communities of interest. Now, a community of interest can be virtually anything other than race. And, and so it can be a geographic area. It can be a shared social or economic interest. Uh, it can be impacted by county policies. I know that I used to live right next to a railroad track, and the tracks would come, the, the, the gates would come down for fifteen minutes on my drive home every single day, and every single day, there'd be no train that went by during that fifteen-minute period. There was a community of very upset commuters who went through that little, uh, passageway, and, and that became a community of interest in that neighborhood right next to where I lived. And, and so things like this can, can evolve in the communities of interest, and they're not so set in stone like they are with neighborhoods, where we're typically talking about very historic, uh, evolving boundaries that everybody is aware of. So those communities of interest can be much more broad. One of the things communities of interest have to ask themselves is, would I benefit from having one council member? And, you know, beholden to my group? Or am I such a large group that I might want to be split, so I have two council members? A perfect example of this might be like a large senior, uh, living c- community. High propensity voters, a lot of them living in a very dense area, sometimes they want to be split, because they feel like they could influence two elects rather than one. And so that's one thing is communities of interest need to consider when they're giving feedback on what they'd like to see in maps drawn. Now, when we talk about communities of interest, it cannot include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. So not race, but not race only. It could be things like language and culture, but not race only, and not, uh, political candidates, incumbents, or parties. So those are the only two no-no's when we're talking about communities of interest, but otherwise, this one is very, very open, while neighborhoods is a little more narrow. Next slide, please. As part of this process, uh, if the, if any community members do decide to submit, submit maps, we will process them, and we will make them available on a, a map review tool. This is important, because one, we're going to have to process it through our GIS system, our, our graphic interface system, where we can see what the census data is gonna be in each voting block as drawn. Uh, but it also, using this system will allow people, when they're reviewing all of the draft maps that are available, to zoom in, zoom out, and put different layers over top of each other and see how maps compare to each other, and it's a very powerful tool. And that's already part of this process. We wanted to let you know that that was gonna be part of the process. Next slide, please. Now, your community members can submit their own tools, or their own maps. And, and we wanted to make this clear, because sometimes you have people living in your communities who do this as a hobby, or they do it professionally, uh, or they're just really interested and wanted to, want to take this on and learn and, and, you know, engage. And so we wanted to let you know that, that community members can submit their own GIS shape files or census block equivalent, equivalency file using the twenty twenty census blocks, uh, th- through, um, Ms. Coffee, and she'll, she'll get that to us. And, uh, is it Kofi or Coffee? I may have mispronounced. Coffee, okay. Uh, she'll get that to us, and we'll make sure to process it. We need it at least ten days before the second public hearing. That's important, because sometimes we get forty or fifty of these things, and we've got a hundred and seventy-three other projects going on right now. Uh, and, and so we want to make sure that we get it processed in time for everybody to give good thought and attention to it before the next meeting. Madam Mayor?
I was just thinking, I'm wondering what date that was, but we can talk about that.
Sure. I- it, the next meeting is February fourteenth, so we would need that submitted by February fourth. Also, uh, lots of people like to draw maps, and sometimes it can be very simple, like on a napkin. It doesn't need to be a formal GIS map. Uh, it, it can, it can be a printout off the, if the internet, uh, of what that would look like. And, but what a lot of people will do is they don't necessarily care about the entire city and how it's broken up. They care about how their council district is broken up. And so it is possible to draw just one district. But when we ask, if you do that, if you're, when you draw a map, whether it be one district or a complete map, please tell us what's most important to you when you were drawing your map. What are your themes? What are your rationales? A couple bullet points or a couple brief sentences or sentence fragments can go a long way in helping us when we process those maps. Uh, we're, one, report to the council. If it doesn't work, we can say, council, this map doesn't work, but here were the concepts that the person who submitted it wanted you to be aware of. And maybe, if I'm aware of them in time, if I'm drawing draft maps for you, then I can try to incorporate some of those, uh, for your consideration in a legally compliant map. Uh, or, or we can use them at the second iteration to make modifications to one of the maps that are available to you. We just asked that if you do create your own map, that you send it to the, uh, the districting email address. Next slide, please. Now, one of the things that we're hoping to hear from the council tonight is whether or not they want to make available, uh, mapping tools. Uh, there are some tools available. For example, there, there are some free tools that community members can go online and draw their own, uh, council districts using free online tools. Uh, or the, we can make available, uh, both simple and complex tools. So there is a, uh, easy-to-use draw-your-neighborhood tool, uh, that we can, we, we can put together for you. That's where we essentially take census blocks and put them together in discrete areas, put population numbers, and you start grouping them together into council districts until you get roughly the, the size council district that you're, you're shooting for with a small variance. There's a similar version of that that involves a paper and Excel-based system, where you use Excel, and instead of population numbers, use area numbers. And you can, the nice thing about that tool is when you put together your council districts, you actually have the, the demographic data to go with it. And then finally, there's a much more complex online tool, uh, called DRA two thousand, uh, and that, that is, that is another tool, uh, that, that has a much steeper learning curve. But once people learn it, it's very powerful and, and easier to turn out several iterations of maps if users are so inclined. Now, whether you, you use the powerful complicated tool or, or the Excel or PaperKit, we don't have a preference at National Demographics. What we care about i- is making sure that we understand where you're putting the lines and what your rationale was when drawing it, so we can help translate for the council and for the community, uh, because oftentimes the people that are submitting are very technically competent, because they have background skills. Next slide, please. Now, one of the things to consider is you currently have a five district map that was elected, or, or that was put into place two or three years ago. And, and so one of the things we did was we took the current lines and, and put in the twenty twenty census data here. And so we see that the total population using the twenty twenty census was thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four. And so for a five council district, that, that means each district should have seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five people. Total people. Doesn't matter their age. It's not voting age only. It's not citizens only. It's just total people. So when we're drawing council districts, we're gonna try to get as close to seventy-seven, thirty-five as possible. Well, when we look, using the twenty twenty census data, we see that, that your existing lines have a population deviation of one point eight seven percent. Now, remember, the maximum threshold was ten percent. You're well within this. This would be a low variation map. Uh, in, in, if I, if I were drawing them from scratch, trying to create roughly equal populations, I would consider this a wild success from a population balancing perspective. Some of the other things we want to look at, for example, is, is, is your, your demographics of your total population and of your citizen voting age population. For meeting the California Voting Rights Act, we're looking more at the citizen voting age population, because we're looking at the ability of historically marginalized voters, their ability to, uh, produce a desired outcome or elect a person of their choice, where we can put together council districts where they would form a majority or plurality. Uh, and, and so when we look, for example, the citizen voting age population for Latinos, just Latinx district wide is seventeen percent. So it's very different, di- difficult to draw a, a council district with a very high Latinx, uh, we couldn't achieve a majority at seventeen percent. Not only that, you have very, uh, relatively even, uh, distribution of each, uh, racial ethnic group throughout your, your air, your city. And so there's not like a major block of like, all the Latinos live here and all the African-Americans live here. You, you've got a nice distribution. That makes it a little harder in some cases to draw council districts where you're gonna have that major, majority. So we see it, for example, in Council District One, uh, when you look at the Asian and Pacific Islanders, forty-seven percent. So near majority in Council District One for that group. Uh, and then moving across, Council District Two has, has a strong showing and could reach a plurality with all non-white voters, but much harder for one group to, uh, generate an outcome of their choosing based on their group. So what, while Latina, Latinx seems to be a little more evenly distributed throughout your population, uh, you know, Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders are a little more concentrated in districts one and two, uh, despite the fact that they only have twenty-three percent of the total population. Native Americans are, of course, an important group, but statistically, uh, they don't have the numbers in your population, uh, to, to have a majority. Uh, similarly with, uh, African-Americans at three percent of the citizen voting age population. And so that, that citizen voting age population is what we're looking at and trying to make sure where we can that we're putting together those historically marginalized groups, uh, but not to the extent where we pack, where we're putting them all in one area, so they can't affect other areas, or, or, or stack, uh, where, where, where we're breaking them up and diluting their, their voting strength. And so the map you have does about as good a job in this regard as what we can do mathematically, uh, and, and at least for the, uh, Asian Pacific Islanders in District One. There are other demographic datas to consider, for example, the education, uh, you know, high school grad, bachelor, graduate degrees, uh, household, uh, income, percentage of population, uh, age sixteen plus, housing status, we're talking single-family rented, owned, multifamily. These are all important demographics and where, and when you look at the unique makeup of each council district, it paints a very different picture, and, and sometimes those are relevant inputs for conversation around communities of interest. So Pacifica is in a rather unique situation where you have the ability to have your four public hearings and readopt this map. But you also want to hear from your community regarding neighborhoods or communities of interest before you move any further down that lot road. And then the council do, will need to decide, do they want to provide mapping tools beyond, since, since we are in this situation, is it worth spending more money? Or not? That, that's the council's decision, and then whether or not they want NDC to draw additional maps or not. So that's what I'm hoping to hear after we do the public hearing tonight. I think that's the last slide. Next slide, please. Yes.
Okay, Robert, thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it. Well, hi, Sarah, you're there. Did you want to say something? Okay, do we have any questions from council? Sue, why the loss?
Um, I have a question about how, I know that the districts are do- drawn using census tracts, but it is difficult sometimes, because one side of the street is in one district and the other side of the street's in another. And I don't think there's any way around that, because we would have to move full census tracts to do that. Um, and then that would cause the numbers to be off, but we do see that quite a bit, uh, in our maps.
It sure would be more convenient if they went along the back of property lines rather than the front of them. That's for sure.
Anybody else? Questions? Go to public comment. Let's go to public comment.
Actually, Madam Mayor, if we could officially open the public hearing.
Oh, I'd like to officially open the public hearing. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have three hands raised. And I'll give a quick coffee moment to pull up the timer. Okay, our first speaker is Dan, followed by Dinah. Dan, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me, council members?
I can hear you. I can hear you.
Excellent, I want to draw your attention to the map and the, uh, the pink district, District One, there's a little tail there by a, a red key symbol that's unmarked. I'm assuming that's a school. And also there's an upside down boot sticking out of the back of, uh, District Five in Lindemar. I've sat through about fourteen of these, uh, different electoral maps in different cities and different states. I've never seen a puzzle piece surrounded on three sides, uh, survive any kind of scrutiny or challenge. Essentially, in District Five, Lindemar, you've got one area that's that upside down boot, you've got one, two, three, four. You've got four areas of that street that is technically surrounded on all four sides by, uh, by a different district, um, that toe of that boot, which is almost, I think that's illegal in every state except Texas, and I just wanted to draw your attention to that, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our next hand raise by Dinah Verby, followed by Christine Bowles. Dinah, you may now meet yourself.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Dinah Verby, uh, I live in the Valamar neighborhood and I was very involved in this whole redistricting process when we did it back in twenty eighteen. I did a lot of work with the interactive maps, et cetera. Um, I, you know, I just want to make the point that there was an earlier version where Valamar would have been split with some of the, what, with some of the property that's now in District Four. And so from my perspective, I think it's really important to keep Valamar all in one district. I don't know if there's a compelling reason to redo these maps, but if there is or if there's some legal concern like Dan just mentioned, then perhaps that will be necessary, but I just wanted to say that from a Valamarian's point of view, uh, let's keep Valamar all together. Um, I also wanted to say that I clogged into the meeting earlier was, I thought, in line to give an oral comment, I, I pressed star nine on my phone, but I wasn't recognized. So I'd like to be able to make my comments, not that I wanted to make during oral communications. And that had to do with the, um, the general plan rollout, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the work that went into putting it together. There was a, a technical problem with the rollout that I'm sure you're aware of in that it was not available on the website for most of us because we kept getting an error message that said that the internet bandwidth had been exceeded, so we were not able to actually see the documents until, well, for me, I was able to see it on Saturday, finally. And I checked with the library, the library didn't have it either until this morning. And the reason I'm mentioning this is that I think that calls into question the running of the forty-five days, uh, which I think technically was supposed to start on Friday. And so I'm saying that it would be a good thing for community relations and everybody's best interest if the forty-five days is extended to take into account the problems with accessing the documents. And I'm not saying that as a statement of blame or fault. It, it's just a fact. And I think it would, uh, really help everyone concerned if you consider extending the forty-five day period for a reasonable amount of time. Um, and, uh, other than that, um, I'll just sign off now, thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Dinah. And our last hand raise is from Christine Bowles. Christine, you may now meet yourself.
Um, good evening again, council and staff. Um, in, in terms of the redistricting, I mean, I, I wasn't here when these maps were created a few years ago, but, um, I, I know they were created with a lot of good public input and I know that our geography is very challenged, um, in being able to create proper boundaries, um, and so forth. I, I was just walking on Malagra, um, this afternoon and, you know, realizing that Malagra Drive is, is on one side in District Two and one in District Three. Um, um, but it, it does seem to be an okay division to me, I, you know, what I read and I, I don't, I don't know Dan's comments and so, uh, legal issues aside, um, you know, obviously there are some we need to fix these maps, but, um, what I read is that in the report is that, you know, the, the cost to the city, if we're, um, uh, basically going to keep these maps the same is about four thousand dollars versus about forty-four thousand for, um, really re-looking at redistricting. And since the numbers are okay and I haven't heard a lot of complaints today, I, I know you have to have other public hearings um, to allow more public comment. Um, but my vote would be to, to not spend that money, we have enough other pressing things for our limited resources and limited staff time. And, um, again, barring any legal, uh, non-conformities, I would recommend keeping the map as it is, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Madam Mayor, there are no more hand raises at this time.
Thank you, Josh, we'll bring it back to council for deliberation and direction. Who would like to start? Sue Beckmeyer.
Thank you. Um, I would like to know if you could please, um, enlighten me because I don't think I found the number as to what the cost difference is to opening a mapping tool to the public versus not. Did I miss that? And if I did, I apologize.
So the, the, the additional tools were in the, the original contract, uh, approved, I believe by the council. Uh, I, to be honest, that's, that's not the part of the projects that I do, that's the, the president of the company, Doug Johnson. I, the paper kit is a wrap with the, the paper and Excel, so the very simple drawing kit is about four thousand dollars. The, uh, the online GIS system is closer to twenty thousand dollars, it's, it's, it's quite expensive. Um, and, and here's where you have the very kind of real boots-on-the-ground conversation on, you know, of course you want, as a council, you want input and, and, but the problem is, and, and I can tell you for the most part, sometimes we get, you know, we see jurisdictions spend the money on all these tools and we end up with like one submitted map and, and, but, you know, then again, that you could have a city like Oxnard where they had seventy-two submitted maps, uh, where, you know, the, the local, uh, government class actually made it a class project and we were happy to process those maps, but a- as a result, they spent a lot of money to, to make that available. Um, and, and everybody is just balancing resources right now, so of, of course, we, we look for your direction and, and welcome whatever your approach.
Uh, just a follow-on question then in regard to the GIS tool, is it a, um, lease for a period of time under this contract with relation to specifically this project? Or is it a access to a GIS mapping tool that could potentially benefit in other areas of city management?
It would be specifically for redrawing council districts, so the, NDC would load up all the information necessary so your community members, uh, could do that, so the licensing is only for that purpose.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you, um, similar question, I suppose, but, um, yeah, I, I think that this is a public hearing, if I had just sat through twenty people telling me their opinion about our redistricting, um, that would give me, um, a certain kind of consideration to work with. Um, I, I wasn't on council at the time, but I did sit through a lot of these meetings about redistricting, so I, I got a flavor of what that that tasted like. Um, so I, I think my question is with these tools for the public, let's say if tonight we come to the conclusion, it doesn't seem, but you know, we're, we're hearing crickets and we're taking the crickets for what they are and you're telling us our maps are pretty solid and we're kind of automatically heading in that direction and but at the next meeting, that's when the forty people show up and give us their stories about why it's important that we really do a deep dig on this. Could we decide at that meeting, okay, let's invest in the tools?
Yes, but let, let me lay out some very clear caveats because of where we are in the process and your very tight timeline statutorily. Uh, your next meeting is on Valentine's Day, so we come back, we have a conversation around Valentine's Day and everybody decides to show up and talk and the council wants to move forward.
I think we have another meeting in January, don't we? We have a second meeting in January?
There's a second meeting in January, but the next public hearing for the redistricting is not scheduled until February fourteenth.
Okay, so he's referring to a public hearing, not a council meeting, okay.
And that provides the time for, uh, consideration of any publicly submitted maps so that those can be processed and, um, and posted in time, in the, uh, time regulated prior to the ne- se- second public hearing.
Sorry to interrupt you, Robert.
Absolutely, Mr. O'Neil, uh, Councilmember O'Neil. Uh, what makes, making the switch at the next meeting so difficult is the fact that there's fourteen days between public hearing number two and number three. And so it would take a couple of days to set up whatever tool the council decides it wants to release. And then I would need, you know, at least a week to process whatever maps were turned in. And so we would be giving people a window of, you know, three to five days to use the tools and submit what they want to submit. Not an ideal, uh, you know, engagement, especially since, you know, you're spending money to engage, uh, in that regard. Um, but there's small flexibilities within the process and, you know, there, we, meetings could be added at, at the will of the council. Uh, and, and so, you know, we want to be flexible, we want to make sure that we're following the path that the council wants to follow.
Our city attorney has popped up.
Well, and I just wanted to add for the edification of the council that having been through a lot of these hearings for a lot of different cities, I can tell you that most cities do take this first meeting to decide if you want additional materials um, provided to the public for drawing because of the time constraints that, um, Mr. McIntyre raised, that this really is the meeting and we were expecting the council to decide tonight, frankly, if you wanted additional tools for mapping, for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Um, I would probably opt for, you know, sometime, why, we don't have a, you know, a Mercedes-Benz budget, but we can maybe do a, you know, uh, a smaller one and I would opt for maybe the Excel tools. So we do give the opportunity then, and if I remember right, Mr. McIntyre said it's about four thousand dollars that, you know, we would get some public input if people want to. But, um, forty thousand, I, you know, for maps that substantially are probably going to be the same when all is said and done, so that's my opinion.
Anybody else? I guess I just had one question, so you, uh, we asked all these questions tonight of our community, but we really didn't get answers to them, a couple, but not really. So are they, as a community, going to be able to answer them moving forward or is this, was this it?
No, e- each pub, each meeting is a public hearing, so at every, at every iteration, the, the public has the ability to give input. Our goal was by meeting three to be narrowing down to one or two maps at most and sequencing for each choice, so, so you can pick and move to ordinance.
Yeah, I think I was speaking directly of the questions, like the specific questions that you asked. Thanks, I, I agree with Councilmember O'Neil.
Would we say there's a consensus for the Excel paper tool? Okay, thank you. You're also locked down sometimes, I just want to make sure.
We should probably get, um, um, Madam Mayor, can we get a straw poll from you asking your fellow council members, are there three sort of head nods? I'd rather that come from the mayor.
Sure.
For the consultant, thank you.
Uh, can we all give head nods if we, um, agree with the consent, if we have consensus? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we done? Are we done with this item? Thank you, Robert, for your presentation and we'll see you again.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Let's move on to council communications. Purpose of council communications is for council members to inform each other of items of potential interest to other council members such as inter-agency meetings. Who would like to go first?
I'll, I'll start since no one's like eager here. Um, since we were mostly in holidays, I only went to three different things. Um, I went to my district Fairmont Homeowners Association meeting, um, and Council of Cities in Colma. And, um, thankfully, um, we elected another chair besides me for Council of Cities and City Selection Committee. Um, I also attended a legal update on, uh, SB nine and ten, which, um, detailed everything about SB nine and ten, which is the possible subdivision of single-family lots and adding on of one unit, so it, if you had a standard lot, um, you could subdivide it into two, put, have two single families and two ADUs, not a total of ten units like I read in the Tribune. Um, so it was a quite informative meeting on SB nine and ten. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Who's next? Mike?
Okay, hi, everybody, um, wish everybody a happy new year. I just wanted to, um, say also, most of the county was shut down for, um, the, uh, you know, holidays. Uh, but the air, the woman that was in charge of the airport roundtable has resigned, so if anybody really wants to go to the airport roundtable meetings, there's a job opening there, I have no idea what her qualifications are, but there's a job opening. Um, also, the, uh, person in, the executive director of Laughco resigned or retired, actually. And we just had a meeting today about the recruitment process for the executive director of Laughco and that's, that's going to be coming up on our agenda. Um, we do have a meeting for commute.org earlier. I did, um, want, um, to reiterate that, um, there were some inaccuracies mentioned, um, per the fire chief. Pacifica's never had a fire from the Safe and Same fireworks, uh, that were, it was alleged that they were the ones that started Ortega's school fire in that, at the greenhouse. And that's not true, the only fire that ever happened was some discarded fireworks and were put in a pile and they reignited. Um, Safe and Same do not go in the air, so they do not start the fires the way the illegal ones are, which even if we ban Safe and Same would still be illegal. Um, and the reason the, the, um, uh, greenhouse is so expensive to rebuild at Ortega is because it is a structure that was, is considered a classroom and will have students attending. So it has to go through the Department of State Architects, as does every building that students go into in a school. It has to be ADA compatible in addition to the Department of State Architects, so that's what brings a greenhouse up to two hundred and and fifty thousand dollars, but I just wanted to correct some statements that were made that weren't necessarily accurate, um, in the pre, in the oral comments section. And, um, let's see, uh, this, but, um, that's pretty much it, so, um, had a meeting with Mayor, uh, Mayor Beer. I was gonna say Mary Beer, but I meant Mayor Beer. I gotta get used to that, we, on a possible thing coming up to the council later this month, so that was good. That was a nice productive meeting, I hope Mary felt the same also, so, thank you.
I'll go. Um, I attended a meeting with the executive director of CCG, City and County Association of Governments and a, a project manager there to learn more about the Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee. There was a, an, uh, opportunity for elected officials in Samhain County to apply. There was an opportunity for elected officials in San Mateo County to apply to be a member and to be appointed by CCG board to that committee. And I was pretty sure I knew what it entailed, but I wanted to have a little bit more information. And so attended that meeting, and I did decide to apply. And I submitted my letter of application. I'll keep you posted. Had a lovely opportunity to relax and enjoy the holidays, and I'm really pleased that as many as their jobs allowed of our city staff were able to do that as well. And with that said, our Department of Public Works staff, our, our public safety staff, all worked really diligently through the entire holiday period and through the entire period of our significant rains. And I just personally want to commend that work. I did this the other night at our beautification advisory committee meeting. It was easy to do because we have our field services manager, Paul Avrini there, as well as the Director of Public Works, Lisa Peterson. But I just had to say to them both how much I truly appreciated the effort and energy that our staff put into every aspect of their work and keeping our community safe, working around the clock, looking at tide charts, looking at rain charts. I mean, it's not like they show up and punch a clock and leave. These individuals live, eat, breathe, sleep, wake up, and focus on the members of this community. And, you know, it's not hard, since a good number of them are members of this community and have been members of this community for a very long time. So I just wanted to share that more broadly and let you know as fellow council members and for the public that, that I was very proud of the work that was done during the holiday closure period. In addition, I'm going to give you a little brief update on beautification advisory committee actions. The, you may recall from some while ago, the Adopt a Spot, if you will, the bulbouts on Palmetto Avenue and in other places in the city, they've begun, the committee has been revamping the paperwork and the process for adopting those spots, re-upping the adoption. It was intended to be a two-year adoption. When it first rolled out, well, it's been three years. And so, you know, many groups have sought and elected to re-adopt their same spots. And this is also community members, people who live in the neighborhood. It can be individuals, it can be a business, it can be a civic organization. And some changed the number of spots that they had adopted. New businesses and individuals have expressed interest in adopting a spot. So this whole process is undergoing an update. And including, and really appreciate the help of Michelle Traer in engineering and public works around paperwork and keeping paperwork straight. And, and when the donation is given by the group or individual toward the cost of plants and, and all of that, keeping track of that paperwork is a, a job that, when you have a lot of committee members, it can get a little confused. And Michelle's been terrific with helping to organize and work with committee members. I really, again, want to commend Committee Member Julie Gossage for her work in designing the planting plan for the Cabrillo, near Cabrillo School, the Cresby Avenue Bio Swales, which are now planted and were planted on around the fifteenth or sixteenth of December. And the great news is the Bio Swales have performed exactly as expected in light of all the rain we had. There were times when they were really boggy, but within twenty-four hours of this, of the, of this ceasing of rainfall, it was draining down as expected. So there's some little monitoring that needs to happen, a little bit of different, an additional mulch needs to go in, maybe some different cobble rocks around where the inlets and outlets are. But on the whole, it's really, really positive, and that's super exciting. I'm sure the Director of Public Works or the city manager would comment, but I did want to just acknowledge that we have a new park superintendent on our staff, which is super exciting. And again, I'm pleased to report, it turns out to be someone who lives in our community, who formerly worked outside of our community and is now able to work where they live, which is terrific. The, I under, as I understand it, there's one more mural to be completed, and maybe someone else has information on this, on the Four Directions murals at the beach. But there's, we're working with that artist who had a baby, and so, you know, has some of her own timing challenges. But we also need to coordinate closely because of the repairs to the Anza Pump Station. So that's still progressing. And then I don't know if Mayor Beer can comment on this at all, but I understand that the muralists from the Protect What You Love mural over by Eureka Square have been put in touch with North Coast County Water District. And there's some conversation going on there around a possible additional mural. More information to be forthcoming. That's not within our jurisdiction, because it's not our building. It's North Coast County Water District's jurisdiction. But I just wanted to, to give you that little heads up and let you know that that is a wonderful thing for our community. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill, did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of mention, since December, I just wanted to really encourage everybody that they, to take the precautions for the Omicron. Okay, I know, I know two families in town, and one of them has their kids, were both under five, that have had COVID. I know one, I know two people that have died of COVID this month. One, one in Tahoe, one here local. And I, and it, it can happen. I mean, there was a, a party or something, and some Terranova kids went there, and there was five cases that, from that party at Terranova. And then some of the siblings brought it to another school here in Pacifica. So I think this is a highly contagious, you know, strain. And I just wanted to really encourage everybody to take the proper precautions. And I know they're looking at the definition of fully vaccinated will be in three shots, including a, you know, to include the booster, or two, I guess, if you got Johnson Johnson. But I just wanted to really encourage everybody to take it seriously. It is, I guess, a lot milder than the Delta variant, but you don't ever know what it is, why put yourself at risk? So I also wanted to encourage tomorrow, the Economic Development Committee meeting is having their meeting, we're having a guest speaker, and he's John Hutar, who's the CEO of the San Mateo County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And they had, they take and put out different articles, like they just put one out for restaurants with views of the ocean. And I contacted him because Pacifica wasn't there. And I mean, we have, what, like four, three or four restaurants? I mean, two that are like literally on the, four, three there are literally on the ocean and then Puerto Vallarta. So he did go and he corrected that. And he also did another article recently about six things to do in Pacifica. And it's, it's, so if you wanted to come, that meeting's going to be six o'clock tomorrow. It's a Zoom meeting. Go to the city's website, and you can get the link to go to the Zoom meeting, but it should be kind of interesting. The city, Pacifica is a member of the San Mateo County Convention and Visitors Bureau. They actually do take reservations for our hotels. And I also would ask, if you go to the Economic Development Committee website, look at the local gift card program to help support our local businesses, restaurants, as well as stores. And if you own a business, I'd like you to consider being one of the merchants for that program. So that's it. I forgot all those. Sorry.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilmember O'Neill, I'm so glad you had previously forgotten. That was the perfect segue into me making the recommendation for the Moonraker Restaurant, which has an extraordinarily beautiful view of the ocean, which I got to enjoy the view of with our mayor as we were discussing. I, I had begged her to have a greater understanding of my role in supporting her mayoralship. And so we had a bit of a celebratory dinner accordingly, and the view is beautiful of the ocean at the Moonraker. Happy New Year, everybody. I attended just a few meetings, emergency preparedness. Oz Pat gave a presentation about Maury Point, very much in alignment with the presentation we received last year. Peninsula Clean Energy. We talked a bit about power storage procurement rates. I need to make sure to look at my notes as I said that. We were also talking about the process of refreshing reach codes in the various municipalities, and it looks like we're getting close on the list for Pacifica to look at whether or not we want to refresh certain of our reach codes. So something to look forward to coming down in the year. The next PCE meeting will be on the twenty-seventh of this month. I got to enjoy the Council of Cities with my fellow council members. Congratulations, Councilmember Vaterlaus, for being able to pass the baton. And after that, there were a number of, like, big topic issues that seemed to come up a lot in my email box over the course of the winter break. And so I wanted to just hit the three big ones that I saw, and the first one being the general plan, which we got to hear a lot about during oral communications tonight. And I just wanted to speak from my perspective as somebody whom has been sitting in those chairs for years, long before I came to join my fellow council members, not quite as long as Peter Lowe, but I've been, you know, watching the process for a few years now. And it's, it's difficult for me, because on the one hand, I've been sitting through years of general plan meetings at this point. And on the other hand, not everybody in Pacifica has, and there's still this zeal to really be a community in how we create this. And so I took the feedback that we got tonight, and I plan on talking to our city manager a bit more about that to see what process looks like, because I want to make sure I have a good understanding. But on the other hand, I think that if much more time passes, you know, I, I can't take another year of hearing regularly, you don't have general plan, you don't have general plan, you don't have a general plan. And so finding that balance is important to me. There were a lot of emails about the Lindemar area flooding, as was mentioned by a commenter earlier, and I, I certainly don't want to get into the weeds of what is and what isn't. But I think what's clear is that that neighborhood historically has issues with storm drainage. We're working on our storm drainage master plan. And as a newcomer to city council, I'll admit that I did not know the difference between our storm drain system when I walked in and our sewer system. I didn't realize they were two different things. And so I'm, I'm learning that. I've already requested a meeting with Director of Public Works, Lisa Peterson, to make sure that I have a much more robust understanding that this isn't a problem just in Lindemar, but other places too. But it's well taken that the Anza Pump Station has been in need of repair for quite a while. A little bit, it's been out of our hands, why it hasn't gotten repaired by now. And I think we've taken next steps to get an emergency permitting in place so that that happens sooner than later at this point. So we have several balls rolling and in the air, if I may mix metaphors. But it, it's well taken that we have an issue there, and I'm looking forward to learning a lot more about our storm drainage to see what can be done and how quickly, and to be able to answer some of these things without constantly having to go back to staff myself. And last but not least, COVID, as Councilmember O'Neill mentioned. And I brought up my niece a few months back who had contracted COVID. While I did not show publicly the picture of her on a oxygen tank, I absolutely had it up on my Facebook profile for a number of months because it made a strong impression on me, and I wanted to make a strong impression on others. And of course, with the permission of her mother, because the idea of using a young child's image without explicit permission of parents, I find reprehensible. But with permission of her mother, that was my rallying cry for quite a while. And especially in the beginning, when a vaccination apparently meant you can't transmit it to someone else. And then Delta came along, and it was like, well, the odds are not as likely you're going to transmit it to someone else. So it was still get vaccinated, don't transmit it, at least cut it down in half the odds. And now with this Omicron thing, it's a lot harder for me to say that. I'm grateful that Omicron apparently so far seems to be something that's not landing people in a coffin as frequently as, say, Delta or the original variant. But at the same time, as somebody who, when I have a cold, I go to work, I have a friend, and my friend has a daughter, and my friend's daughter has an immune, compromised immune system. And so, while on the one hand, I want to let down my guard because absolutely, after all, Omicron won't kill me, right? But on the other hand, I know somebody, and if I catch that illness and hug my friend and she passes it to her daughter, I won't be able to live with myself. And that was a very long-winded way of saying, please wear a mask. You know, I, I think that at this point, getting a vaccine has to do with you and not winding up in the hospital if you get COVID. The hospitals are still overwhelmed, my family are nurses, please get vaccinated. But if you can't do that, the least you can do is wear a mask, because even if you might not get sick and die, you don't know who has a compromised immunity. And that's what weighs heavy on my mind, even as deeply and desperately as I wish to take off my mask, as I work eight hours at work, day after day after day. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. And happy new year.
Thank you. I think I'll just follow up on that. We put out a letter this morning to the community about COVID, and in that letter, there's a, a lot of different resources. There's resources for just basically staying informed, so you can call 211 for non-medical information with services available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There's testing resources, so there's testing all over the place. You can go to www.smcgov.org forward slash testing. There's also going to be a testing site, or there also is a testing site in Pacifica, at the Pacifica Parking Lot, corner of Francisco Boulevard and Salado Avenue. And that will, appointments are available for adults and children ages one and older. Those without appointments will not be accepted after 5:00 PM. And so it's from Sunday, on Sundays, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And so I'll, I'll also be sharing all of the resources and links and things through my email, my social media. You know, I work for the high school district and the Daly City Youth Health Center, and it's very overwhelming to see the surge and the effects that it's having on our students and our families. And, you know, there's that, there's the mental health aspect of what's going on too, because people are afraid again, and they're, you know. Yeah, I'm just seeing in, in my coworkers and in my students. So I am participating in the mayor's mental health initiative, and we've been talking a lot about the mental health, things that are going on because of COVID. And so we have some subgroups that are working on different things, and I am working on a mental health first aid with the Office of Diversity and Equity. And so we were able to get some money from the county to actually do some training of the trainers. And so I'll let you know more about that as it comes forward. I wanted to thank Daly City Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni for inviting me to attend the sixty-sixth installation of officers of the Coastside Masonic Lodge, seven, six, two. A Pacifica resident, Leo El Palano, was installed as a master. And it was so beautiful, I didn't know anything about it. I knew that the lodge was there because I, like, saw it, but I didn't, I had no idea what, what it was. And so I went, and it was beautiful, there were so many people from Pacifica there as part of the lodge, and they were really happy that someone from Pacifica was there to support them, and they just really want us to come back again. And they wanted me to let you all know that they do cleanups on the highway once a month. And so they're always out there doing something for our community. So it was really cool. I want to thank Pacifica Hot Rods for organizing the holiday car parade and toy drives. They assembled at Park Mall and had hot chocolate, and people brought toys and put them into the back of Jeff Shive's truck. They assembled at Park Mall and had hot chocolate and people brought toys and put them into the back of Jeff Shive's truck. And they, there were almost 80 cars involved in the parade. It was beautiful and fun. You know, those guys are always giving back to our community. So I just want to thank all of them very much. I went to the joint articulation meeting with, that's with the Water Department and Jefferson Union High School District, Pacifica School District and the cities. We meet quarterly to talk about all the things that are going on and to support each other. I really needed the break. It was really nice to have some time off. As Mayor Protem mentioned, there was a lot of emails that came through and I'm still going through all of them. And I'll get to all of them as I, as I make my way through them. So I think that's all I have for tonight. And I'm going to pass it on to City Manager Kevin Woodhouse for staff communications.
You're muted, Kevin. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Beer and Mayor Protem, Big Stick and council members, and Happy New Year to everyone. Why don't I continue? I have, I have several communications to make, but I'll continue with the, the Omicron conversation. Because certainly, as we anticipated before the holidays, it certainly has come true when we came back post-holiday. So the single day case counts right away, if you, if you do look at the county health data right after the holidays were double what the case counts reported last January were. Fortunately, as was mentioned with Omicron, it's, it's not as severe, especially for those that have been vaccinated. But it is very contagious and spreads dramatically. The single day case count, I believe today, was doubled again over what it was on last Monday. So nearly 2,000, I don't know the exact number, 1,800 to 2,000 case counts, I believe. So everyone knows someone who's, who's been affected by Omicron. And as the mayor mentioned, a, a communication to the community from the mayor came out today. I think it's posting to social media as we speak, it's on the city's website, and there are numerous resources listed in there. Testing, both rapid testing and PCR testing is a big issue right now. And it's availability and logistics and complications and making appointments and those challenges. So we'll, we'll try to address those. But just to know, as, as the mayor mentioned, there is a Sunday testing site in Pacifica at the lodge at Francisco and Salada. And there are other resources that are available in that letter, so please look that up. The schools are definitely very much affected. And the city organization is also affected. So we're doing our best to keep the doors open, but keep employees healthy and, and keep our first responders and out, those that are out in the field and public works, police and fire healthy so we can have the appropriate coverage. So just to reiterate, the mask recommendations now are certainly the KN95, N95 and surgical masks. They're the most protective and it's very important that, that those are being worn to protect yourself and to protect others. So I'll stop with that on Omicron. This is again, once again, you know, almost two years into this, this is a, a day by day, week by week thing. So we continue to monitor, hopefully this surge subsides in a few weeks, but we'll just wait and see regarding that. Next, I wanted to talk about the December 23 rainstorm and, and provide some information. There, there is a for the record post available on the city's website that provides detailed facts about that rainstorm and about how the, both the Lindemar and Anza Pump Stations were, were staffed. The entire time overnight, the pumps were working to minimize any water accumulation in the, in the flood prone neighborhoods in Lindemar. There was mention of the, the case closed gas station that is the Panda Express now. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that that is an old gas station that is closed and is, and it's no contamination risk at this point in time. And what I would also mention is, you know, to reiterate that when there are storms, staff, as, as Councilmember Beckmeyer mentioned, are, are working around the clock. And the city also takes very seriously and proactively reports to all the regulatory agencies, all the necessary reporting that's required. We've done that regularly, we continue to do that. So the, we continue to work on our storm water challenges and hope for the best and work hard on them. Finally, I wanted to, as was mentioned, of course, the, the Plan Pacifica release with the general plan update and Sharp Heart's specific plan and the draft environmental impact report. Just wanted to make a, a couple clarifying comments regarding that. Number one is that city staff took time to put together some detailed frequently asked questions. So it's very important for community members to read those FAQs. They're on the Plan Pacifica page, webpage, and they do address a lot of questions that are being raised about the process and timeline. Specific to the timeline, what I want to be clear on is, is the documents posted on Friday night. I, I do know that they, at least one member of the public had downloaded them Friday night, provided comments that very night. I know I was able to download them on Saturday. I can't speak to whether anybody individually had problems. And so there could always be that, we would, you know, work to address that. But the 45 day review period began starting Saturday, not Friday. So I wanted to be clear about that. In addition, that's a 45 day review period for the draft environmental impact report comments. Members of the community are able to provide comments on the general plan update and the Sharp Heart's specific plan anytime they want, up to noon the day of the first public hearing by the planning commission. Now, so you know, that will be months. But we encourage to receive comments altogether during the 45 day period because that enables a more robust review of all of those comments. But, but there is not technically a 45 day comment deadline for comments on the actual general plan update document and the specific plan. There was only, there's only a technical 45 day deadline on the draft environmental impact report. So I want to be very clear about that. And those were the three topics that I wanted to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Time for a break before we move on. Five minutes, 8:45 will come back at 8:50. Consideration item number 10, which is the Surf Camp School Permitting Policy Recommendations. And we're going to have Director Mike Perez and PBNR Commissioner Cindy Abbott to present to us tonight. Hi, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor Beer and city council members. As you said, Michael Perez, who is your Director of Park Speeches and Recreation. And with us tonight is Cindy Abbott, the Chair of the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. And we'll be presenting the Surf Camp School Policy Advisory Task Force Program Recommendations. Next slide, please. Here's the overview of our presentation. We'll be talking about task force members, task force purpose, background, process, recommendations and next steps. Next slide, please. And here are our task force members. In December of 2020, the PBNR Commission made recommendations for the next steps for the Surf Camp School Policy. And among the recommendations was creation of this task force. It included Commissioners Kevin Kellogg and Cynthia Knowles, along with Chair Abbott, who also served as the task force facilitator. Cliff Hodges, who's the owner of one of the commercial surf camps Adventure Out. Johnny Irwin, who's the Executive Director of City Surf Project, who succeeded Mayor Manikam Shirley, who was the founder and at that time, Executive Director of Brown Girl Surf. At large, Pacifica resident members Malcolm Carson and Nia Rivers. Pedro Point Surf Club Representative Stefan Mayo and Kimberly Williams, who represented the San Mateo County Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. Next slide, please.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. You may remember that it was back in June of 2020 that members of the public from across the Greater Bay Area brought to the attention of the city of Pacifica a request to review and expand the current Surf Camp School Policy. While current commercial camps and school providers have been providing high quality opportunities for the community for many years, including hiring a diverse group of surf camp instructors and partnering with nonprofit organizations, offering surfing instruction to underserved and marginalized individuals. The public comments brought forward and highlighted an area of nonprofit programming that's been growing in recent years. These important programs serve the mission to increase access to surfing and the healing power of the ocean with a focus on equity that creates community and amplifies the voices of youth and surfers of color. With new awareness, the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission and the Surf Camp School Task Force undertook to update the policies with a focus on equity and inclusion. As the PBNR Commission's last review of the program was back in 2013, it was decided that a thorough review of the entire program should be initiated all at the same time. And that included developing a purpose statement for the program, a review of the overall application qualifications and requirements, gauging support for the program to include both nonprofit organizations through the addition of a Community Access Partner Program, or CAP, and the separate continuation of commercial schools and camps. We also looked at the addition of qualifications specific to the CAP program that were recommended by the nonprofit organizations. We discussed the concept of load, the number of participants a permittee can bring on the beach, how often and when for allocating CAP permits and scheduling. And we spent a lot of time talking about implementing an RFP system to broaden both nonprofit and commercial opportunities as well as engaging in overall program evaluation and review. To many municipalities in California that have surf camps and school permitting programs, none specifically address the need to ensure a diverse mix of inclusive programs that will expand equity in surf camps and schools. The time and engagement of the public throughout this process was really critical and greatly appreciated. There who brought us this program, made us understand what was going on, how important this is. And with the implementation of these task force recommendations that were approved by the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, Pacifica will be at the forefront of providing these opportunities. Before we move any further into the presentation though, I'd also like to note that understanding that there was a true need here, we went ahead and the Park Speeches and Rec Commission approved pilot permits at the end of 2020 for two nonprofit organizations. That way, no one had to wait while we were going through the in-depth process of the task force work. Next slide and Director Perez.
One, thank you. Following the recommendations back in 2004, in May 2005, the city council approved the implementation of a Surf Camp School Policy to be regulated by the Park Speeches and Recreation Department. And the policy set a limit of three surf camp schools, two large, one small, and allowed for local surf shops to continue to practice and teach in small groups, which was a max of five. Policy was amended, as mentioned, when it was reviewed in 2013, to allow one local surf camp or one local surf shop to apply annually for a permit and increase the number of students that were currently allowed for surf camps from five, or surf shops from five to 12. At the June 2008, 2020 city council meeting, approximately 30 At the June 2008, 2020 City Council made approximately 30 emails and letters and about 13 speakers address concerns over the surf camp permitting process. In particular, many wrote or stated that they were concerned about racial equity relating to beach access and that the permitting process makes it difficult for nonprofits like Brown Girl Surf, City Surf Project, or others to apply for a surf camp permit. At that time, we had one small, two large, and one local shop. As I had mentioned, these camps have been permitted to operate for many years. When an inquiry was received, groups were added to a list and told they'd be contacted should a spot open. And since the policy limits the number of permitted camps, each year those camps have chosen to renew their permits. New camp operators, whether they were nonprofit or not, had not been able to receive a permit. And then in June 22 of 2020, the Council referred this work item to the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission to evaluate the Pacifica Surf Camp Program, determine if and how the program could be amended to allow more surf camps to operate or to revise the permit renewal process in order to support nonprofits that work with diverse communities. And since that time, several meetings on the topic had been held. On the 22nd of July, the of August, the Commission had study sessions to discuss it further. And they received input from the public. And there was a proposal from the two nonprofits for a Community Access Partner Permit, which is CAP, C-A-P-P. August 26, the Commission held a meeting and approved changes to the program to include the two CAP partners for a six-month pilot program, as was mentioned earlier. And then the Commissioners also agreed to put this on their work plan for further study sessions. On the 14th of October, at a study session for the Commission, they reviewed the city's current policy and guidelines and rules and compared and contrasted these requirements with other agencies and reviewed the CAP proposal. A second proposal was submitted by Brown Girls and City Surf Project. On December 16, 2020, the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission created a task force to consider and make recommendations regarding the Surf Camp Policy. Soon, a website was created to make available information on the task force purpose, the members, meeting dates, as well as any supportive documents, which included past staff reports, meeting agendas, and submitted proposals. Next slide. Task Force met monthly from February through August of 2021, skipping September and meeting in October to review the report. The first meeting established the purpose and outcome expectations while giving the group background of the policy. In subsequent meetings, several presentations and discussions covering the current surf policy and the CAP proposal were considered. A current policy snapshot was regularly included in the task force packet. And meeting topics were outlined in a meeting roadmap, which was updated as needed along the way. And during the July and August meetings, the task force was presented with a recommendations review matrix created to help work through this process of agreeing on final recommendations. At each meeting, there were opportunities for public comment, which was a vital part of this process. Next slide, please.
As Director Perez has noted, with the number of program elements that were being reviewed, a matrix for discussion and recommendations was developed by staff reflecting the many topics that were considered by the task force. As all meetings were held via Zoom and with 10 members on the task force, it was agreed that task force members would use a level of agreement process with recommendations voted on using a scale of zero to five with hands and fingers raised to help streamline the voting process. A vote of zero, one, or two reflected a no to the proposal or concept that was being discussed. And a vote of three, four, and five reflected a yes. A recap of the task force vote was included in the presentation that went to the PBNR Commission for review and approval of the recommendations. The initial list of topics was multiple pages and has been distilled down to this list of recommendations that we'll be summarizing for you next. Next slide. As you've heard and read in the staff report, the implementation of the original policies goes back to 2003, when the City of Pacifica was developing a master plan for public improvements at Pacifica State Beach Lindemar. At that time, the community was raising concerns about beach usage, congestion, and a need to focus on water safety. The program evolved without an overall statement of purpose. And we thought it was important to add one at this time. So the purpose statement that was approved by the task force and PBNR Commission reflects an understanding that the beach and surf are a shared public resource. It's there for both active and passive recreation and respite. Opportunities are fairly allocated to include all segments of the community identified as being for people of all ages and economic groups. And that instructional opportunities are diverse, promoting access and equity. Next slide. It's important to share that as the work of the task force got underway, the discussion and discussions evolved. Consideration very, very quickly moved from should changes be undertaken to how will changes be implemented. Significant deliberation was devoted to the question of if two parallel permitting programs should be initiated, which was the recommendation of the nonprofit organizations, or a robust or a more robust revision of the program that melded permitting of both the commercial and nonprofit camps and schools into one process. The task force vote shown here of being seven to one doesn't reflect opposition to adding the CAP to the program, rather a suggestion and a topic of an entire meeting's conversation that the new permit program should move forward with a single program for all. And while one permit process may be where we end up down the road in the future, the interest of the nonprofit organizations to develop and nurture the new CAP permit received the longest level of support by the task force members. Other things that were talked about was the continued discussion of required safety certifications, as well as minor wording changes to application qualifications for clarity. Additional criteria, including a 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, an organizational mission to serve people from low income or underrepresented groups, and instructors with specific training and cultural competencies is included as part of the program for the CAP permit applicants. And the thought here is that by doing this and keeping these separate at this time and having that separate list of criteria, which we hone down to be very manageable, was that it really provides distinction to the pool of the CAP permit. Additional review and agreement was also achieved regarding the maximum number of program participants on the beach at a time. This, as always, include the focus on safety and enjoyment of the beach and water by all. The number of 98 students that is part of what we're asking for your approval on reflects the historic number of surf students allowed in the program of 74, plus the addition of the two current pilot permits that were initiated in 2021, for a total of 91 students at one time. The task force also reaffirmed the areas of operations which had come up by the public as something to consider. And the group proposed and approved continuing the area being between the North Restrooms and San Pedro Creek, which is the safest part of the beach wave breaks. We also looked at overall camp hours and added in details about major holidays when beach use is even higher than a typical summer day and therefore caps are not permitted. The commercial camps were already not operating their programs on days like Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day. So that wasn't really a big change. We just wanted to add that into the documentation for clarity. Next slide. Load. We're not going to go over with you too much of this, but we'll try to introduce the topic to you because this was a major consideration. Recognizing that the popularity of our public beaches has been significantly increasing over the years, the question came up as to how can more students be safely added to the beach and water? The historic permitting program allocates a set number of permits for and didn't identify when those permit holders can hold their programs. And so through discussion and a review of the traditional surf camp and school hours, it was shown and recognized that there are days and times, such as after school on a weekday, when the beach has not been fully utilized. So these underutilized and these underutilized times are often the times that best fit the use of the nonprofit organizations and their programs, such as bringing school kids to the beach during the school year, not right in the middle of a sunny summer day. And the concept of load was what came forward to us from the nonprofit organizations. And load is looking at the number of participants a permittee can bring to the beach, how often and when. And the concept here is that each permittee creates a particular load of participants, but it actually varies over time. And the agreement of the group was to use this concept of load for the CAP permits only, with no change to the commercial traditional surf camps. And the purpose of this was that applying load for the CAP permits increases access for more CAP organizations to participate. So, for example, instead of giving a permit for 25 or 24 students that's static regardless of what time, a program may only need to use 10 of those seats or create a load of 10 students on the beach. So we want to recognize that in that time spot, potentially a couple of nonprofit programs could be taking place at the same time. And again, really, the goal was to provide as much access as possible. We had a lot of conversation, though, about why initially, as we understand more about load and being able to fully utilize the beach, the nature of the commercials surf school businesses between weather, surf conditions, and constantly changing schedules. We didn't want to try to add that on to the complexity of their scheduling at this time. They may have people that reach out and schedule themselves over a website or phone call, different ways of doing that. And to explain a concept of load and try to schedule all of that would be very difficult. And again, our focus is to make sure the addition of the new CAP program is successful. As far as the application process and evaluation, the task force agreed and the PBNR Commission also approved a new Request for Proposal, or RFP, for both the CAP and commercial programs. The length, though, we talked about, should vary. And this was also taking into consideration what we were hearing from the nonprofit organizations. Often, they're working on grants in a different grant cycle that may be a shorter period of year than a commercial school operates on. So there was agreement that the Request for Proposal timeline for the CAP program would be every three years, which allows them time to get the grant and get their program fully in place, operate it, and then cycle through again. We also don't know if all of the nonprofit organizations will want to continue every year. So we thought three years was a good way to start that program. Commercial permits, we had a lot of conversation about. Again, you've heard that there was no opening for a traditional business model either to come into this program. And this also takes time to build your reputation and programming. So for commercial permits, the proposal is for permits to be renewed every five years. And that's a formal RFP process. For both of these programs, if a business or a nonprofit wants to drop out, we'll have a mechanism where new people can, new organizations can apply, so those spaces won't go unused. To approve these two different types of permits, again, at the suggestion of the nonprofit organizations, the reviewing body for all applications submitted for the CAP program will go through a Community Application Review Board. And the intention of that board will be to bring in people who understand surfing, the nonprofit environment, as well as the special cultural competencies that will be really important for that program. And then the PBNR Commission will be the reviewing body and aworder of the commercial applications. You know, that's a lot to digest there. We've got the CAP program that has a different time cycle, as well as review board. And then the commercial school permits at the five years with the PBNR Commission reviewing them. Okay, next slide, back to Director Perez.
Thank you. So the next steps involve our submission of a coastal development permit application to the Coastal Commission, which was submitted last month. And we're anticipating response will be for additional information that we would then provide, would take a few months. And that, once that happens, the Coastal Commission agenda, you know, we're, these are very tentative, three to four months for that. In terms of the CAP program, the RFP development would take two, three months. And hopefully, that might be ready by May. Recruitment for the CAP application review body, that would take, could happen simultaneously and also be done in May. Application review, one to two months could happen over the summer. An announcement in the fall, program starting at some point in 2023. And the commercial permits, a pretty similar timeline. But there would be an RFP and application review by the summer and announcement early 2023. And then in terms of the administrative duties that we have to do, you know, staff would be working on scheduling, implementation, ongoing review, and administrative support, in addition to the tasks mentioned above in these next steps. You know, some of that, the scheduling would be the calendaring system that maintains the flexibility, doesn't have a book, and somewhat of a reservation system, possibly. We talked about using that for the CAP program. And then review process would be an ongoing detailed review of the whole program at set time intervals. And so we want to make sure that there's evaluation and review. That'll be a big part of everything. Next slide, please. So the action that we'd be requesting of council tonight is to adopt the Surf Camp School Permitting Policy Recommendations. Before we go to questions, just wanted to put it out there to thank all the Park Speech and Recreation Commissioners, the folks on the task force, and all the people from the various communities that came out to the meetings and contributed to all of our meetings. It was, as was mentioned before, a very vital and robust discussion and input from people for all of this. So with that, we're happy to answer your questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation and all the work. Mayor Prokant, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have several questions. I'm hoping they're relatively short in nature. My first question was just the idea of 98, a load of 98. Does that mean 98 people on the beach at once at any given time? Or does that mean 98 participants in all programs involved at any given time?
Sound fairly similar. I'll give a shot at that. So it's 98 folks actively participating in a surf camper school at one time.
Okay, okay. That immediately helps me a lot. There's a recommendation. It's on the matrix on our packet page 153. It's number eight. And the recommendation is to change the nonprofit small camp size from 12 to 15, if I understood that properly, which would mean that the load would get raised from 98 to 104. So is the recommendation for 104 rather than 98?
No, it's going to stay at 98 because we know, again, with load, not all of those seats or that all of those permits aren't used at one time. So it stays at the 98, but one camp can have, a nonprofit camp can have up to 15 at one time. So they may not all be using all of their seats simultaneously at the same day, same time.
Okay. So this is why I'm confused. A moment ago, didn't you say? A moment ago, didn't you say that all participants involved would be capped at ninety-eight?
Yeah, but that's one time at the beach. So not every camp, commercial or nonprofit, uses the beach at the same time.
So at any given time, there would be an assurance that there is not more than ninety-eight people on the beach, though conceptually, there's a hundred and forty, a hundred and four people allowed to be part of the programs in total?
Correct. But after a lot of conversation about when is the beach used by the two different types of programs, it's rare they're all there at the same time.
Sure. It actually kind of led me to this next question, then. If it's a matter of how many people are allowed on the beach, which is ninety-eight, what would be to stop us from having another camp involved, more than to a third camp that's utilizing the beach at a completely different time? And at that point, clearly, it's not saturating over the ninety-eight or oversaturating, rather.
Well, that's where the whole, this whole new concept of load comes in. And it does provide that more opportunity for the cap permittees to potentially have more students and more programs available to offer. So that is kind of the beauty of this whole load process. Instead of our historical way of saying a permit holder has twenty-four seats, end of story. They may only use ten, or they may use all twenty-four, but they were able to hold all that space at one time. It wasn't available for anybody else. And we did some preliminary review that the Parks, Beaches, and Rec Department staff put together to find out some historical scheduling. And that's where we saw that particularly in the afternoon on a non-summer day, there is space available. So we tried to kind of not get too much into that number and this whole scheduling, which part of what the program is going to do. A lot of the nonprofit programs partner together, know each other, and work a lot together. So they're going to be making sure that they're not over utilizing those spaces.
If another nonprofit were to come out of somewhere that maybe they weren't familiar with and were to say, hey, we'd love to you to apply for a permit at a time when otherwise it's not, the beach isn't being utilized, would they have that opportunity?
Yes, and so as part of the program, it will be asking for how many participants in your program. You know, what time of day do you want to use it? And together, the nonprofits, along with the PBNR staff, will organize those time slots and everything using a scheduling tool. And again, they're all super familiar with each other, have partnered together throughout this process. So we think that this concept of load that, you know, came to us from City Surf Project and Brown Girl Surf is going to really help us utilize the beach more and provide more opportunities.
So after this, there's this concept of the CARB, and I'm going to go through these acronyms. Just as a quick editorial note, I found it amusing that as we often are discussing the difficulty of navigating acronyms, this was an acronym that had an acronym as a part of the acronym. So we have the CAP, which is the Community Access Partner Program, and the CARB, which is the Cap Application Review Body. So in total, the Community Access Partner Program Application Review Body. So my question to you is, and you explained it a little bit, and I understood a little better while you were explaining it, but perhaps you could take another step or two for me. My initial question was, why not just have these permits go through PBNR also? Why the separate CARB process? And the sense I got from what you were saying was essentially there'll be knowledge that's a little deeper, specialized knowledge going into the participatory board of CARB that wouldn't necessarily be present on PBNR. Can you give us a little bit more of a sense of what that specialized knowledge looks like?
Well, first of all, we want to make sure that that board is very inclusive and that it has a broad range of people that are sitting on it. Again, just as part of this overall goal of equity and inclusion. It will be very interesting because we know that for programs that are applying for this permit, they're probably not going to be members of that, but we will look to them and to, for example, maybe the San Mateo County, you know, Office of Equity and Inclusion to help us find members. We talked about that while being a coastal resident may be helpful, that doesn't necessarily need to be a Pacifican. It's a process that we hope we're all going to learn something through about how to develop diverse and equitable bodies. And we think it's really important for those programs because they do a lot of training, and I'm sure some of the members of the public might talk about this too. But, you know, their focus, our camps, the longstanding commercial operators have always done a great job on water safety and who their instructors are. But there hasn't really been that deep understanding of being a person who's maybe been placed in a position where they felt uncomfortable going to the beach. You know, the way that, I'll use myself as an example, growing up on the coast side in Southern California, just always thought of the beach and the water as a friend and a great place to go. But that's not where folks necessarily from inland areas have ever felt comfortable, both for their own safety, fear of the water, and then feeling like an outsider. So we really think that a program, somebody deciding on who those permit holders should be, belongs in a different group.
And have we decided what the approximate makeup of CARB will be? Like, you mentioned that it might include people who are not necessarily Pacifica residents.
Yeah, so that's the next step. As you saw in the next steps, putting all of this together is going to be over the next few months of work in the Parks, Beaches, and Rec Department to take to these next steps. We wanted to make sure that we had agreement here at this time before moving into that next level of detail.
And my final question has to do with the pilot program that was established. So was there a pilot program for these organizations to have camps last summer?
Yes, the pilot actually began in, for the fall of 2020. But of course, things have continued to be rather difficult, even if folks are outdoors, that's still difficult. So one of the permit holders, City Surf Project, did hold a number of camps. Brown Girl Surf was being a lot more mindful, bringing folks over in buses and shared transportation and things. City Surf does that too. But it's been a very difficult time and still challenging to even run an outdoor program. But it, camps were held with the organizations since the fall of 2021 with these pilot permits.
Given the constraints of COVID, would you say that despite it was a rather successful pilot?
I think that City Surf was there an awful lot and had great access, looked like everybody was having a fabulous time. They partnered very well, as they've always done with the commercial schools. So yes, I think it's a successful start.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Vadoas.
Sorry, I was just wondering why you didn't actually require a lifeguard. It seems like in all of that safety, that someone from each organization who's present should be a lifeguard there.
I'm going to quickly note that there's, we do require water safety certification, and Director Perez can go into the details. But a lot of water safety, lifeguarding doesn't really apply to the type of work that's being done in the surf line and teaching how to surf. And Director Perez can maybe go into more of these very specific licenses. This was, we talked about it quite a bit, and really, no one wanted to go to that extra level. And Director Perez?
Yeah, well, one of them was also, we used to have a water safety instructor requirement, and that's really something that happens at the swimming pool and not at the beach. And then for the lifeguard thing, you know, during the whole process, the task force, as you saw, was made up of folks from camps, existing camps and the nonprofits, folks surfers. There were surfers, a lot of surfers, and we heard from a lot of people. And the lifeguarding, which wasn't a requirement before in our previous things. So what we did add in, it was recommended but not, not required. So some folks may have it and some may not, but we ultimately, and I'd say we, the task force, ultimately decided on putting in the recommendation after, I would say that that was a good, good discussion on that topic.
So, sorry, can you explain to me then the water safety? I mean, if something happens?
Well, water safety instructor is a certificate that you get when you teach swim lessons in the swimming pool. And it doesn't relate to open water surfing and those types of things. I think everybody that does, you know, work for the various camps or volunteer or do any kinds of work, they have to be proficient in surfing, which would mean they're very good at, when it comes to pulling somebody out of the water if they need to do that. In fact, a lot of, a lot of our surf camps would probably tell you that, you know, oh, we pulled somebody else, not from their camp out, but they saved somebody at the beach. So they're out there doing those types of things, and there's not a problem in the actual school itself for that. But again, we used to require the water safety instructor, but again, it really has no bearing on someone who would be working in open water. And, you know, we consulted with the various schools, but also with our own aquatics coordinator, who happened to have, you know, experience when it goes to open water lifeguarding as well. So it just didn't seem like, it was sort of an unnecessary requirement based on the, what they were doing.
Okay, thank you.
And they do need to have the certification, CPR certification on file for each employee. So that is a requirement. So it is, and they also have to have a safety plan that they talk about what they're going to do that's documented and provided to the PBNR department. Councilmember O'Neil?
First of all, I have to admit, I was always thinking, you know, number of permits, and I appreciate the clarity of load. I think that's actually a very good way to deal with the issue and in some ways better than a permit. Now, the permits are going to be issued to individual entities, right? I mean, ABC School Surfing or whatever. Now, are those going to be transferable? So let's say one of the commercials wants to sell, retire or whatever, is that, do they have to turn the permit in? Or is that going to be part of his business that he sells? Or vice versa for the nonprofits? Are they transferable to another nonprofit?
We have had a commercial school that did change hands several years ago, and they're still operating with us. We don't specifically have that addressed. I think, I don't know that the nonprofit would be sold in that time. That might be kind of unusual, but the length of the RFP kind of lays out how long they would have the permit. We did not address whether the business changes hands or not.
One concern I would have is an RFP process. I understand the concept and everything, but RFPs just seem very onerous. And I don't think it's fair for, you know, nonprofits who, you know, minimally staffed, et cetera, volunteers, and even the commercials all going through the entire, is this going to be an abbreviated form of kind of RFP? So it's not quite as onerous?
I'd love for it to not be onerous, but, because we've got to put it together. So we're not, to put something to. I think the concept of the RFP is, is one, so we can, you know, make it fair and put it out there and put that announcement out there. So we have, other people have the ability to apply or other organizations, and I think that's the main point of that. And the nonprofits would probably tell you better than I do, but they're used to applying for these things. And sometimes they're used to getting like not a lot of turnaround to apply for it. And typically, a well-run nonprofit should have the types of information that you would need for that and probably almost boilerplate information that would go into that. And perhaps the specific program or that specific RFP would be, you know, something else, you know, not unlike, you know, applying for grants and that type of thing. It would be a new, it would be new for our commercial camps. But there'll, there'll be plenty of time for them to, you know, know it's coming.
Right, I would just like to encourage that, you know what I mean? If you can simplify it, you know what I mean? Don't make it really difficult for people because this is, you know, for surf, you know, a surf camp, that's all. Now, in regards to...
We did look at other jurisdictions along the coast in California. And of those that we were able to survey, I think it was something six out of nine of them did do do RFPs. So we're not breaking new ground on that.
Well, and I'm just thinking, you know, the RFPs we usually talk about, you know, are for, you know, Beach Boulevard or, you know, solar, you know what I mean? I just want something kind of simple. Are we, will the nonprofits be held to the same financial standards in terms of liability insurance, bonding, whatever we might require of the commercial?
Yes, we have, if you look in the packet, under guidelines and rules, we've got that laid out. But it does list, you know, various things. In addition, there's sort of some, some things that are specific to nonprofits because a commercial camp doesn't have to have a 501(c)(3). And there's, in terms of them demonstrating their work with, you know, diverse populations, underserved communities and those types of things. So that's in there, I'm trying to find a page for that.
And then I assume where the name insured also?
Yes. Yeah, they're required to hold, have insurance, have a business license, and all that kind of boilerplate stuff that you would expect, certainly. So I'm, so I'm 156, you have your packet page, and 157 are the guidelines, rules, and applicant qualifications. They were, there were some minor tweaks to most of them that were already in existence.
Okay, okay. I think that pretty much answers. I'm concerned, again, kind of simplifying is having another review board, you know what I mean? For, I understand you want some expertise from the, for nonprofits there, but it's just kind of like, do you see this happening where you issue the RFP, you get your responses, and then staff would make, similar to what we get for a construction project or whatever, then staff would recommend, these are the people we would issue permits to?
I think it could happen that way. I also think that we, you know, for a review board for the nonprofits, you know, we probably set them up for it and have a meeting where they go over it and discuss the entrance. And, you know, it's quite possible we don't get, you know, more than a handful applying. And in that case, it might not be that hard if they all need the qualifications in order to issue the permits to them.
Right, right.
But I see it, you know, similar to commission-type board meeting or a committee or something like that, where staff would make sure they had all the information. But also Chair Abbott could also speak to this, but I know she's been on grant review boards and things like that. And there's a lot of newer processes for these types of things. But in terms of, you know, selecting the individuals for it, we definitely are going to be consulting the folks that Chair Abbott mentioned before, as well as, you know, nonprofits that we are, you know, currently have been working with. They've had a lot to do with us getting to where we are right now. They're the ones that submitted the proposal and came up with the idea of that review board. So I think in general, I understand what you're saying about, you know, trying to simplify things. And believe me, I would, I would love to do that, but I know there are some things that are going to take a little extra work. But we, we need, we're going to need to do those things to make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm glad you understood load, and I believe Mira, who may be talking, introduced us to that idea, and it's brilliant. Any other questions?
I think I have a question. Who's appointing the people on CARB?
So I think with consultation, we'll be recruiting them, probably at a staff level. But I, I definitely, we're going to be getting input on this. This is not our area of expertise. And as I mentioned, our two nonprofits that we've been working with, they know a lot about this. And we've had some conversations with them about it. And organization that Chair Abbott mentioned as well, and I'm not going to try and say it. I know it's the San Mateo County-
Office of Diversity and Equity.
Yeah, yeah, so I definitely think, yeah, like, we'll be talking to something like that. I mean, this is all very new. And, you know, we're, we're kind of, you know, leading the way on this, I guess. You know, no one, we're not, so we're, we're going to need, we're not looking at another program that's doing this and saying, hey, we're going to do that. So this is something that we will be seeking lots of input on as we move forward.
Thank you so much. Shall we go to public comment?
Mayor Beer, we have three hands raised at this time. I'm seeing now four. Our first hand is from Adriana Guerrero, followed by Me Water Foundation. Adriana, you may now unmute yourself.
Oh, wait a minute, Mike, did you want to say something? I'm sorry. Sorry, Josh. Mike has hand up, I didn't see that.
I pressed the wrong button, I was going to participants and pressed hand, sorry.
Oh, okay. Back at it, Josh, thanks.
Do you want to reopen public comment? We'll start off with Adriana, followed by Me Water. Adriana, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello and good evening, can everyone hear me? Great, my name is Adriana Guerrero and I'm the current executive director of Brown Girl Surf. First, I would like to acknowledge and appreciate the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Department, the PBR Commission and the Task Force for their time, dedication and work over the past 20 months towards developing a CAP system at Pacifica State Beach. I would also like to acknowledge the city's continued efforts to demonstrate a commitment to equitable beach access and striving to keep the promises set forth by the California Coastal Act for recognizing the beach belongs to and should be accessible to all. Access, however, is the first step in a staircase towards equity. Inclusion is the end goal in a beach environment where folks feel like they belong, feel safe and feel welcome. The CAP permit system proposed here moves us towards this goal. It ensures that organizations who specifically focus on including those who have been historically marginalized have access and space on the beach. People of color, particularly women of color, experience inequitable access to California beaches, the ocean and surfing due to persistent systemic inequities. Brown Girl Surf recognizing that diversity is complex and multifaceted. And at Brown Girl Surf, we focus on ensuring that this community, our community, receives the support they need to feel included at the beach. We've designed our organizational model around it and we have specific expertise in this area. Therefore, by creating an environment where community organizations like us and city surf projects that only feel welcomed and safe, the city of Pacifica will be fostering a space for equitable coastal access, inclusive practices and community growth. I believe the city of Pacifica and Lindemar Beach can become a model of equitable coastal access. We see the implementation of the CAP system not only as a local achievement, but as a model for the entire state and future federal policies. Therefore, I strongly encourage the city of Pacifica and the city council to vote to approve the CAP recommendations and continue working towards the goal of ensuring that Pacifica State Beach at Lindemar and all beaches in Pacifica are beaches where people feel like they belong, where they feel safe and where they feel included. Lastly, I would like to extend our deep gratitude to the Pacifica Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission for voting to pass the task force recommendations in support of the CAP system proposal last year. We look forward to continuing to engage and work with the city of Pacifica to ensure that the CAP is implemented and that we collectively achieve the intent of increasing equitable access to beach and surfing. Thank you very much and thank you to you, city council members, for your time this evening.
Thank you, Adriana. Our next speaker is Me Water Foundation, followed by Mira. Me Water, you may now unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, city council members, for your time. My name is Eddie Donilon, I am the founder of Me Water Foundation. We are a nonprofit based in San Francisco and similar to City Surf Project and Brown Girl Surf. We take, we take underserved youth from all over the bay, all nine bay or county surfing up and down to local beaches. And I, I just want to share this, this little story that's, I've, I've shared before, but I thought it'd be good to share in this meeting. And for many years, and this goes back many years now, I've driven down, down the coast in our passenger van. And as we approached Lindemar, as we come down the hill, I can't, I can't even count the number of times, like, the kids have seen the waves breaking, you know, just a wide open expansive beach and shouted, you know, can we go there? Is that where we're going? And I'm sitting in the driver's seat and this question has always been a really tough one for me. And I have to tell them over and over many times that we can't. And when I'm asked why, you know, it's, it's a really, it's a really difficult seat to sit in. And I, I, I have to tell the truth, it's basically that we're not allowed. And, you know, I had to sit with that. And, you know, some of the kids might ask me more questions about it, what does that mean? You know, I, I try and explain some of the permitting things and I, and I, I'm very well versed with the challenges. And, and, you know, there's been a lot of work put into this whole process. And, and I, I hold a lot of value and, and gratitude towards that process. But, you know, we always just drive by. And again, you know, while it doesn't completely dampen our, taken away from us having fun for the day. And, you know, it surely, it certainly does impact the spirit of those kids. And it's usually the kids that don't say anything that I, that I, that I worry about. And to be honest, it, it kind of reminds me of, you know, I don't know, like, I, I didn't live through, you know, segregation times and stuff like that, but it, it's a really weird feeling to sit with. So, and again, I'm well aware of the challenges faced with providing this equity and access to your beaches. I just ask you to think about the kids driving by, being told they're not allowed to go to the beach. And because that's never sat well with me. So thank you very much for your time and considerations in this matter. And yeah, happy new year, everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mira, followed by City Surf Project. Mira, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much to the honorable council members, mayor, mayor pro tem. I'm so stoked to be here tonight. My name is Mira Monicum Shirley and I'm the founder and former executive director of Brown Girl Surf. Co-founder, I should say. I, first, I want to congratulate the Parks, Beaches and Rec Commission, the Parks, Beaches and Rec staff and the Surf Permit Task Force in particular for crafting a surf permit policy that goes really far to ensure equitable access for surfing and surf instruction at Pacifica State Beach. While it was not intended to do so, the Pacifica Surf Permit Policy established in 2005 led to inequitable access to surfing opportunities at Pacifica State Beach for many people, as Eddie just illustrated through his story. But the policy presented tonight is the result of 20 months of incredibly hard work by many individuals within the city of Pacifica government and outside. I know that because I sat on the task force until my retirement in May of last year. Just my retirement from my job, I'm not fully retired. It was a remarkable example of the power of people working across different perspectives to solve a really important problem. And I'm deeply grateful to all who participated. Having spent easily over 200 hours of my own time working on this issue, I believe that the CAP system and the adjustments to the existing surf permit system being recommended today are the best path forward for creating a more equitable permitting system that is fair. Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Project embarked on this work, not just for our own orgs to have access, but to make sure there was a system in place for other groups who are engaging folks who've been underrepresented in surfing to also have a spot at the beach. There will need to be a continued reevaluation of the CAP permit spot allotments as more groups like this come to the table. But the policy recommended today is a huge step in the right direction and puts in place some really important systems to make all of this possible. Pacifica has an opportunity to lead the way on the California coast for demonstrating a permit system that truly promotes equity in surfing. So I urge you to unanimously pass the adjustments to the permitting system and the creation of the Community Access Partner Permit Program or the CAP recommended by PBRC. Future generations, as well as hundreds of surfers today in my own community, will thank you. Thank you so much to have the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm really excited for this day. And that's all.
Our next speaker is City Surf Project, followed by Chloe. City Surf Project, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to also say a huge thank you to the task force and the PBRC for all the hard work put in to create the recommendations. Also, for the, to the city council for the consideration this evening and, and the questions brought up, some great ones that we've been thinking about over the last 20 month, 20 months that Mira had let us know that it has taken this long. We worked really long and hard to come up with this CAP policy and, and I feel very proud of, of what we've created. I believe the, the CAP policy and surf school recommendations bring us a, a step closer towards a more equitable access to, to Lindemar Beach, a more equitable policy. And those, that is especially for folks that have not seen themselves represented in the surfing lineup or who have not been able to get to the beach because plain and simply their group could not get a permit, like Eddie had mentioned before. This will ultimately create a beach environment that is more harmonious and diverse by allowing more groups to bring surfers from historically marginalized backgrounds in surfing. I also wanted to address a, a couple of things brought up during the consideration. One question, how has the pilot been going? Over the past year at City Surf Project, we have taken over 200 years youth surfing to Lindemar Beach over the, over the past year for the pilot program. And for many of our youth, this was their first time surfing. And, and they would not have otherwise have gotten a chance to visit Lindemar Beach, especially during this, Lindemar Beach, especially during this pandemic. The experience of getting out to the, out of the city to connect with the beautiful beaches of Pacifica has had a huge impact on our youth. I also wanted to point out that both our organizations, Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Project rely heavily on safety. Our coaches are lifeguard and CPR certified and we do trainings with ocean beach lifeguards every year. This could and should be a CARB consideration when making those permit recommendations. Finally, the beach is all of ours, it belongs to all of us. When we need to continue to uphold this, I truly believe with the right calendaring, there's plenty of room for all of us to enjoy the surf. So I encourage the city council to adopt the recommendations that will make Pacifica a model for access across the state. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chloe, followed by Kimberly. Chloe, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. My name is Chloe Erskine, I'm an educator, social studies, high school teacher in Oakland and have been in the past, less so during this pandemic unfortunately, a frequent visitor to your, to the magnificent beach at Lindemar, but also to other beaches around Pacifica like Rockaway and Shark Park, to mention a couple. And this space that, that I have had the privilege to access is a deeply healing one. And I'm sure that you all know that on your own, but I want to just share personally that as a volunteer for Brown Girl Surf, for, I think it's going on three years at this point, definitely two. I have really been able to participate in a program that brings really wonderful young people, young women of color and myself as a, as a white person and also as a bisexual woman. I've been able to be invited as, as an ally and to act as an ally, as well as a friendly assistant surf instructor and, you know, safety person on the beach at times as well. And the, this program, one of the multiple programs that hopefully get to someday have equitable access sooner than later through the Community Access Partnership Permit and the processes that your PBR is putting in place, that we'll get to share in the beauty of the land that you, at the land and sea that is at our disposal right now. And to really honor it for the future generations that will get to come there. One of the things that has been a really great, great point that I hear a lot of support for, as from what I'm hearing at least, is for the creation of the CAP system to serve nonprofits providing equitable access to underrepresented groups until the entire system of, of permitting can reach a more equal place much further down the road. So I want to applaud the mayor and the honorable council members here for, and especially the task force members for working so diligently on this and providing space to hear some uncomfortable truths and also work to move beyond them and heal as a, as a whole, as, as a, as a town. And on a personal note, your, your town was instrumental in my personal healing from a point of having very deteriorating depression and anxiety to a point of being someone who can cope with those, with those all too common conditions or illnesses, whatever you want to call them. I know that I'm not alone in experiencing those. Perhaps there are people here listening who have experienced depression or anxiety as well. If not, you certainly may know someone who has. And I want you to think through that-
Thank you, Chloe, I'm sorry I have to cut you off because your time is through, but thank you so much.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, Chloe. Our next speaker is Kimberly Williams, followed by Lynn Adams. Kimberly, you may now unmute yourself. Kimberly Williams, you may now unmute yourself.
Perhaps, Josh, we can go on to Lynn and come back to Kimberly?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are, great.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm away today on the road. So I'm Kimberly Williams with the San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. And I want to thank the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission for their facilitation of the task force process and their work to bring the Community Access Partnership Permit Policy Proposal to the city council. I also want to thank all of the task force members who participated in the process in a good faith effort to create a more equitable permit system. San Mateo County Surf Rider supports this policy wholeheartedly. And we, as others have mentioned, expect that it will continue to evolve over time to be as inclusive as possible to provide access to all surf camps and surf schools, nonprofits and for-profits alike, to give all those who wish to apply for a permit the opportunity to do so. Mike Perez mentioned that there is a CDP in process. And we also encourage the PBNR to work with the Coastal Commission to maybe codify some of the equitable access language in the written CDP as part of this moving forward. We think that that would be a very helpful part of this. And I won't, I, I sincerely thank City Surf Project and Brown Girl Surf for all the incredible work that they put into this. It really has been a long, arduous process for them. And they've been amazing. And I asked the city council to approve this policy. Surf Rider is happy to be as helpful as we can be going forward to keep this policy moving, evolving, to be as inclusive as possible. And we really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity that we had to participate. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kimberly. Our final speaker this evening is Lynn Adams. Lynn, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I, I, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to, to pipe in that I am very proud and thankful to the PBNR Commission, Mike and, and the committee- that I am very proud and thankful to the PBNR Commission, Mike and, and the committee, and Cindy, and all the people that served on the committee to make this proposal possible. This is something that Pacificans can be proud of. It's something that we didn't, weren't aware of for, for a long, long time, and something that we are all evolving to know a little bit more about, and equity is so important. And we have to do the work to make that happen. And everybody deserves the opportunity to come to the beach and, and to, and to learn and experience the joy of the ocean and appreciate nature. So I'm, I'm very grateful for all the work that's been done for the CAP program that you do. I, I highly recommend that you, that you pass this proposal and continue to evolve it as necessary to make it so that anybody, all underrepresented people can come to the beach if they would like to, and if there are programs to make that happen. I'd also like to say, say thanks to Mira and, and the City Surf Project for bringing these youth out so that they can experience the ocean as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And we actually have another hand raised from Linda Lachlan. Linda, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me now? Great. Hi, this is Linda Lachlan. I'm with the California Coastal Commission. I'm the Public Access Program Manager statewide, and I've been following the task force and all the work that they've been doing over the last twenty months. It's been a, a long, arduous journey. I'm here today to concur with the speakers that you've heard already about how important this program is, providing equity and inclusion, and I want to thank them for their excellent work. I concur with their comments and I recommend that the city council adopt the recommendation as is provided by the staff. And so I won't, won't take any more time, but just say it's been a lot of good work and I'm very, very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Mayor Beer, I don't see any more hand raises at this time.
Okay, thank you so much, Josh. We can bring it back to council. For deliberation or a motion?
I move that we approve the CAP program as stated.
Second.
Tiger had his hand up. I don't know if you saw that, Mary.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
She'd actually called on me shortly before you made your motion, albeit they were simultaneous in occurrence. So I have a few comments to make before going to the vote on the motion that's on the floor. And first of all, it does my heart so much good to have a representative of the Coastal Commission come here and give us support for something we're engaged in. That's, I think it's the first time in my experience I've, I've had that positive reinforcement on a city policy, and it's really, it's really lovely, and I look forward to more of that going forward. That story about, for anybody who's listening, if you're ever driving in a bus through Pacifica and you wish to stop at our beach, while there are complications about how we orchestrate our businesses here, if your kids want to check out our beach, let them. Again, when business gets involved, that's a slightly different thing, but there is a place between, and we invite you here. Another place where my heart was really, felt good, there's this little bit in the staff report right here. And, and I guess before I read that, the other thing that's kind of been on my mind is, hey, look, we're a bunch of white people deciding this. It's the elephant in the room. I want to bring it to the fore. And so I want to acknowledge that. So there's this line in the staff report, "The many municipalities in California have surf camper schools permitting programs. None specifically address the need to ensure a diverse mix of inclusive programs that will expand equity in surf camper schools. With the implementation of the task force recommendations, Pacifica will be at the forefront of providing these opportunities." And it is inclined to make me proud to be up here in support of what we've been discussing. And again, proud within the context of I am who I am and we are who we are. And that having been said, I look at this as a first step in working with partners who will teach us how to model making this a safe place for anyone who would wish access to the ocean. We are a gateway to this great life-giving entity of the whole of human experience. And within that context, I'm very excited that we're taking steps to make sure that it's not just the residents here, but anyone who needs, as a former speaker put it, the healing qualities of this great gift that is from where we all come ultimately. So that, that's pretty much it. I have my own story about healing by the waterside, but that can wait for another day. And I'm looking forward to casting a yes vote quite soon. Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Thank you very much. I wanted to make some comments because I hadn't spoken earlier, and I didn't speak earlier because everyone, primarily Councilmember Big Stick, brought up the, the questions that I had, or comments that I had. Ever since this issue was brought forward twenty months ago, and the literal deluge of email that we received in one twenty, no, not even twenty-four hour period on this topic was very clear and very pronounced around the issue of equity. And I think what, for me, at the time which we first made the recommendation and, and request for PBNR Commission to take this up, it seemed to me, and my personal stance, I think I said it at that time and I reiterate it now, is that it is for me personally, and I think I can go so far as to say, all council members on this virtual day is a no-brainer that it is absolutely everyone's right to participate and to visit our beach. And, and it was a little difficult, frankly, to have the question raised in a way that implied we didn't think that was true. And it took me a little bit of self-talk and recognition of the fact that it's not personal, it's just business, that it was the function of the way in which our policy was working or not working as it, as it was with regard to camps. It wasn't an intentional act on the part of this council, any previous council, or any one affiliated with the city electeds or staff with Pacifica. And I'm really proud that we've had an opportunity to hear the community and to fix it. And I realize that it's, you know, it's more work, it's an RFP, it's, it's time, it's been a huge investment, and it will continue to be, but it's worth it. And so absolutely, you know, in light of the Coastal Act, I think we do acknowledge and recognize that it's absolutely everyone's right. Not, not to visit our beach, because it's not our beach, it is everyone's beach. So I, I work in an elementary school, and sometimes it's challenging to explain to kids why certain things can't happen in language that they understand. So I, I would just hope that we can always acknowledge that even if procedures don't allow certain things like a group visiting or a group having a class or some kind of thing like that, individuals always have the opportunity. And certainly, and I'm grateful to, to Lynn Adams and the entire Pacific Beach Coalition for their leadership in helping anybody who wants to participate in support, cleaning the beach and, and visiting the beach and learning about the beach. So, you know, this is just another step in that direction, and it is an excellent one, and I'm proud of it. And I'm really looking forward to the upcoming Coastal Commission meeting when this coastal development permit will be heard. So thank you very much for indulging my comments.
Councilmember Vodarlos, did you want to have any comments or?
I, I definitely agree with what everyone said, and, and having no knowledge in the beginning of what was happening with these issues, we had no idea. And it was never meant to exclude anyone ever. It was just the process and how it was taking place in the past. And I'm glad that we can be inclusive now, that everyone can do this, and everyone who has this opportunity can really enjoy being in Pacifica and really get the feelings that all of us get when we go to the beach. And someday I'll take a surf lesson too. Thanks.
I would also like to make some comments. You know, systems of oppression, they're, that's what they are, the systems of oppression, right? And it's that locals-only mindset that really needs to be changed. And this is so beautiful. This work is so important. And as people were sharing their public comments, I was, I was moved to tears because it's just, it's just amazing. And the work that the Parker Rec Commission had put in, thank you so much. Thank you, Cindy, and everybody on the task force. You know, thank you to Deirdre, former mayor Deirdre Martin for, for pushing this along. And, yeah, I'm, I'm humbled and, and moved, and I can't wait to vote. That's, that's all I got. We can have a vote now, Sarah.
All right. And with the motion by Council, by Councilmember O'Neill and a second by Councilmember Vodarlos to approve the recommendations made in the report, I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Vodarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
And Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you, Mike, for all your work.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you for this, to this whole commission.
Okay, is everybody okay? Does anyone need a break? Good to go. Okay, so then we're going to move on to Agenda Item 11, which is Appointment of Councilmember Ad Hoc Subcommittee to Develop and Recommend Updates to the City Council Rules and Codes of Ethics. And City Manager Woodhouse is going to present this.
Thank you, Mayor Beer and Mayor Protem Big Stick, and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. Just a brief presentation and introduction of this item, excuse me. As the council is aware, as, as a best practice, we are continually looking at improving policies and our administrative procedures. And over recent years, even with the COVID challenges, there's a handful that we have tackled to improve and bring forth to the council. And it's, what this item is about is to address the 2014 Council Code of Ethics and Rules and to start working on potential updates to that important policy, which is really an established, important to establishing the standards for the roles, responsibilities, and expectations of the council and staff in the operation of the organization and promoting communication, understanding and trust in these roles and responsibilities, and helping to make city council meetings as productive as possible. And the request of this item is not about the substance of that update, but to recommend that a two-councilmember ad hoc subcommittee be appointed by the council to work with myself and the city attorney to work on the policy, develop recommendations that would be brought back to the full council before the end of fiscal year. That completes my introduction of this item.
Do we have any questions from councilor, or should we go to public comment? Okay, like to open public comment?
Mayor Beer, I do not see any hand raises.
Okay, great. Then we will bring it back to council for deliberation and to nominate two council members. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I would just like to say in general, I'm really pleased that this is coming forward. I think policies like this always need a, a refresh. I can certainly say at the school board, I've observed a, a very deliberate process for taking a section of administrative policies and board policies at each meeting and, ooh, refreshing. And I'm sure that if you're a seated school board member, it's a little arduous. Mike could probably comment on that from his years of experience. But in general, I'm, I feel like I just want to say that I think our staff and our council operate at the highest level of ethics. So I just want to make a public statement that it's not because we think we're not ethical that we're undertaking this, but it's really to, it's continuous process improvement. And, and I also just, I can't, I'm going to say it all wrong, but I, I really just want to acknowledge our city manager has written on the topic of ethics in government-elected leadership staff-level work. I, I'm sorry, I butchered that, Kevin, but he could tell you what he did better than I can. It's, it's just, it's just a value that we all operate with every single day. And I think having a two-member ad hoc subcommittee to really look at this policy and, and really even further codify what I believe is our constant and daily practice will be a really great way to go. I'm prepared to make a motion of individuals, I would propose for that, but I will defer to the mayor and to my fellow council members for comments.
Are there any other comments? I saw that Mayor Protem put his hand down, so I'm assuming that I could ask-
Public, public comment?
Oh.
We did that.
We did that.
There wasn't any.
It's getting late.
If I may make a motion, I'd like to move that we appoint an ad hoc, ad hoc subcommittee to develop and recommend updates to the city council rules and codes of ethics, consider, consisting of council members, Councilmember Mike O'Neill and Mayor Protem Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Well, second.
Okay, and with the motion to appoint Councilmember O'Neill and Mayor Protem Big Stick to the ad hoc subcommittee made by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Mayor Beer, I'll start, start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vodarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our final agenda item, this is for review of the city council liaison and committee assignments. Annually, the council members review the assignments of council members to the city committees, the liaisons to the city committees and commissions, as well as the representatives to other regional agencies where the city council chooses those members. And the packet shows the current list of 2021 city council liaison and committee assignments. And I can share my screen to bring up that list as the council wishes to deliberate and discuss any recommended adjustments to the list for the 2022 year.
And do we have any questions first? Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I think I still have my hand up from before, but I do have a question of Councilmember O'Neill. I think there's a conflict or maybe a new conflict or something around Economic Development Committee for you, and I'm not sure if I'm remembering that, or if you can just let me know.
Yeah, I was gonna have-
Yeah, I was going to have to withdraw from the Economic Development Committee because I've agreed to do another commitment. I will go to this month's meeting. But there are two liaisons to that, and that's the only committee that actually has two liaisons. So if Councilwoman Beckmeyer wishes to remain the sole liaison, I could act as the backup.
I'm okay with that.
Unless somebody else wants to be backup.
Unless somebody else would like to request it, of course.
Mayor Protem.
I am already the backup of the two of you. I'm happy to remain as another backup, switching from two to one, from one to two. But it strikes me that this conversation is deliberation. And so I just wanted to point that out also.
Yeah, perhaps we should go to public comment so we can come back and talk more about this.
Mayor Beer, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Josh. We can bring it back for deliberation. So does that mean that we need another person for economic development? Right?
Or I can be the primary and either O'Neill or Big Stick can be the alternate.
Right, it all depends. Right now, the way it's structured, that has two liaisons. If we're willing to have one liaison and then a backup, and that would be like the normal structure of all the other committees also.
Was there a reason why we had two liaisons to that committee?
My recollection.
You have your hand up. Sorry.
I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah, I think we can let this flow right now.
My recollection to this was that they wanted to show the importance of economic development to the council, and that's why they had two liaisons.
I mean, it is important.
Councilmember Vaterlas, do you have interest in being a co-first?
I have another meeting on Tuesday night that I attend, and that's why it's difficult. I could also be a backup every once in a while, but I do attend a Tuesday night meeting. It's just the timing.
You know, since it is an important committee and they do do a lot of varied work, and we actually have some real good individuals that are, you know, really active on it, we could almost have a rotating, well, the city attorney would have to tell me, is it legal for us to have a rotating? And we just work out a schedule among the five of us as to who's the second councilperson?
Councilmember O'Neill, I would caution that that may bring Brown Act challenges if there's a rotation of council members on a standing committee.
That's exactly it. Thank you, city clerk. There would be Brown Act concerns with a rotating liaison member. I can go ahead and offer myself to be the second councilmember. I think it's Tuesdays, right?
Yes.
It's tomorrow night, yeah.
It's Tuesday, it's always the Tuesday after council meeting. So you get two meetings bam bam in a week on the week of EDC week.
I will be going tomorrow night since I arranged for the guest speaker, so I'm going to be there tomorrow night.
And tomorrow night, I can only be there from the very beginning, as it turns out. That's usually not an issue for me at all in terms of conflicts, and it just so happens to be one tomorrow night. And I had already asked Councilmember Big Stick as the alternate if he would be able to attend. So maybe we can work amongst ourselves to figure that out for tomorrow night. We don't have to do that right now. Once we've made a motion and adopted this, we can sort it out with the people who land in the box.
Okay.
And I also want to offer Airport Roundtable. You know, you have the opportunity to work with a brand-new person there that's going to be head of the roundtable. And it's a golden opportunity for someone to establish a relationship with, you know, a person that just gets into the job and grab the wings of the airplane and make it, you know, it's a golden opportunity.
Well, Councilmember O'Neill, as tempting as that is, I'm actually wanting to put forward that I would like to remain on Beautification Advisory Committee if possible. That is a very important one to me. However, if that is also an important one to you and you wanted to switch, I would be willing to do that.
No, I'll do the airport. I'm kind of being facetious. It's just kind of difficult because nothing ever happens, you know. But I have made some progress there. I did get a monitoring station. The city manager is supposed to be working on getting a speaker to talk to about the right to left turn. They're going to make over the ocean now. So, and I'm kind of familiar with some of the issues, so. But I did want to give all my council members the opportunity to grab the beer, you know, grab the gold ring if they want it.
Mayor Protem, do you have something you'd like to share?
My own retort notwithstanding that I wouldn't want to rob you of the opportunity. You really have made inroads, is my observation. And perhaps much as a drop of water over time affects a block of concrete, but nonetheless, I think we're seeing an indentation accordingly. I would like to, rather than discussing airport further, move to PCE where I think perhaps it might be advantageous at this point if I take over as the primary rather than the alternate.
Yes. You're really doing a great job there, too. Thank you for that.
I'll just stay where I'm at, except economic development.
Okay.
And I too, I am on a Como Creek Committee, which has pretty much is disbanded. I was going to find out for sure, but it moved into the flood sea level rise. Not the people on the committee, but the topic itself.
And Councilmember Vaterlas, for the heart, would you mind, would you mind switching out of that? Letting me take that?
Out of heart?
Yeah. Sure. You can say no.
I like heart, but it's, that's a.
I don't think you can, no. I don't think you can. It's a city selection committee.
No, no, that's not a full heart position. It's not a full every month heart position. It's just the, it's a one or two times a year, which both of us attended last time.
Did.
So, which is fine, too. So, yeah, you can be the lead and I'll be the backup on that.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to eventually go on to the Heart Board itself.
Oh, there you go.
So.
I would like to make a proposal, and I don't know what the reaction will be. But as we all know, we've had redistricting, right? So we are going to have a new congressperson. We are going to have a new assembly person. We are going to have a new supervisor this year. We are going to have a new, and the state senator is relatively new. And I don't know if we wanted to discuss doing some sort of legislative outreach among the five of us, whether it's a standing committee or whether we each pick a representative to get to know the staff and schmoove staff of the individuals involved.
Like a legislative liaison?
Yeah, I mean, some, I don't know what you want to call it, but I'm just proposing that. And if we want to, if we have to agendaize that for another meeting, that might be a good thing. I don't know.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, yes, that would need to be agendized for another meeting.
I would like to ask for that. Definitely an agendized discussion about because I need some clarification about ledge committees and all about what the options are.
I agree. All right, but does it look like we're set then for our list? Sarah, do you see anything else that we need to change or?
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with the updates that I believe were stated for 2022. I did not catch for Economic Development Committee. So for, just going down the list, confirming, we had discussed Airport Community Roundtable. Councilmember O'Neill will retain a position as the representative with Vaterlas as the alternate. And then I heard discussion of Economic Development Committee where Councilmember O'Neill is giving up that position and confirm who was the second councilmember selected to take that. When I heard interest from several councilmembers.
And that's me. Right?
Yeah.
Mayor.
Beer.
Okay.
With Big Stick as the alternate. Is that your understanding, Tiger?
That's my understanding. Mary, is that going to be too much for you or are you okay with that?
That's a great question. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And I just wanted to check for, we have Economic Development Committee and the Library Advisory Committee that have two councilmember liaisons. And my understanding was that for, in those cases, there does not need to be assigned an alternate?
And there really shouldn't because of the Brown Act concern, but we can deal with that. But if there, it is a little more complicated to have an alternate. We can work with that, but it does create some Brown Act issues.
So based on that information, does council wish to have an alternate assigned for Economic Development Committee? Or do you want to stick with just two council liaisons to that committee without an alternate?
Well, I'm going to ask the current alternate how he feels about all that.
I'm quite all right being taken off as alternate if that makes life easier for us in general. After that, my only question is, would you, it sounds like Mary will be there tomorrow night in my stead? Or do you need me to be there tomorrow, Mary?
No, I was going to be there tomorrow because I arranged for the guest speaker. And this will be.
So you'll be there for the whole meeting?
I was planning on being there for the whole meeting, yes.
So we can't have two, three councilmembers at that meeting? I won't start till Mike is not there. Okay.
I won't be there tomorrow then. Make it easy.
Yeah.
And for the question on the alternate for that committee?
Take me off, please.
Okay. And then I heard a discussion of, I believe it was the Heart Member Agency Committee where Mayor Beer would be the primary representative and Councilmember Vaterlas would be the alternate.
Yes.
And that mirrors the Housing Our People Effectively Interagency Council assignments as well.
Yes.
Okay. And then I had heard discussion of Peninsula Clean Energy or PCE wishing to swap the primary and alternates so that Mayor Protem Big Stick will become the primary representative on that on PCE and Mayor Beer would act as the alternate.
Yes.
And I will update the list to reflect that Councilmember Vaterlas is no longer the chair for Council of Cities and the City Selection Committee. That has changed for 2022.
So who was elected?
Rico Medina and Eddie Flores.
I did want to say, if anyone's interested in ABAG and they want it, or Tiger, if you want to switch with me on that, I'm fine with that. If you don't, I'm fine with that, too.
So over the course of the year, I never wound up attending one of the meetings. I'd be fine taking over if you'd like. I'm just truly not sure what I'm getting myself into.
It's one, it's one meeting a year. And it's a long one. It's like all morning and into the early afternoon, but it's once. And I wasn't at all aware of what I was getting myself into either. But you get a packet in advance and, you know, I can talk to you about what all ABAG entails and as voting delegate for us, what that is.
It's very similar to what the Cal League has at the last day before everybody leaves, where you just pass resolutions and vote and stuff.
But you also get a lot of presentations and understanding, and they talk a lot about RENA and how it came to be and things like that.
Actually, it sounds like I enjoy it very much. So, yeah, I'm fine swapping out with you on that one.
Okay, so we'll reverse our positions on that. And then on the same similar vein, I just got word, and city clerk, I think you might have seen it as well, that the prehospital emergency, what is it called? Where is it? Beckmeyer here, SMC JPA Advanced Life Support. We don't have an alternate on that. I'm the person. And they only meet like twice or three times a year. And the January meeting has been canceled, so the next meeting is going to be March 18th. And at this moment, I'm scheduled to be out of town that day in a way that it would probably be very difficult to attend that meeting. So I would ask that either someone else take it or someone else become the alternate and plan to attend on March 18th because I don't think I'm going to be able to. And what has to do.
Thursday, on Friday?
No, I'm sorry, May. I'm sorry, May.
Oh, May, okay.
Sorry, I misspoke. And what this has to do with is the JPA that we participate in for our ambulance services with AMR. And it's representing us in that.
So May 18th, I actually have an emergency preparedness meeting, it looks like.
Sue, it says there meets Wednesday 5/19. So is it 5/18 or 5, you're saying?
That's probably last year's date.
Yeah, it's the 18th, May 18th.
I can make it if you want. If you, if nobody else can, I'll be happy to go.
Okay, so can we put you down as alternate for that, Mike, then?
Sure.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. That's a 700 committee, by the way. So I'll have to get that information to you for doing your Form 700.
As I was going through the list one more time, I started looking at Emergency Services Council of San Mateo County. Mary, how committed are you to being the alternate on that one?
Not at all.
I could swap in on the alternate slot.
I've never missed it, but you never know.
Any meetings?
I know. Well.
You don't.
I'm healthy.
I didn't want to muscle it on your turf, but I figure as alternate, then maybe I'll have that much more opportunity to check it out and.
It's actually an interesting meeting.
Cool.
And I didn't know if anyone also would want to rotate into open space. I was just looking at all the times my name is on the list. And I'm like, oh, wow.
See, I totally love to do that, but it's emergency preparedness night, and that's the reason why.
Yeah. It's okay, I'll stay. I just wanted to throw it out there. Okay. So do we have a motion? Or are we done?
Sarah, do you have everything you need?
I do, we need to have a.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, we need to have a motion to adopt the list as revised.
Mary, are you, sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Mary, are you still on bike and ped?
I am.
Okay. I saw they had a bunch of openings on bike and ped.
A lot, yeah.
Like four.
But can't two people from the same jurisdiction be on it?
Yeah.
So any other of the four of us who has time in their schedule? So any other of the four of us who has time in their schedule could apply, FYI, just saying.
Next meeting is January 27th. Okay, do we have a motion?
So move that we accept the council liaison and committee assignments.
Second.
And with the council committee and liaison assignments as amended, move by Councilmember Votarlos and seconded by Mayor Protem Big Stick, I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Hey, we're done.
Congratulations, Mary, on your first meeting and finishing it before midnight.
Before 11:00. I think I read in the council, in the council rules and regulations that when we adjourn a meeting, we're supposed to have a motion and a vote.
You know, I thought I read that, too.
I know. I thought, what?
All right, I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor. Hi.
Do we have to do roll call vote?
No.
No.
I'm not aware of that. I don't think that's a legal obligation. I think that's.
Okay, it was just in our rules. I was surprised because we don't do it.
When we update, we can have that discussion at that.
The first deletion of the rules.
Good night.
Everyone, thank you. Good job, Mayor Beer.
Thanks.